Welcome, everyone, to the November 13th, 2025 City Council Meeting. We have not completed the executive agenda, so the executive session is recessed until we complete the regular agenda, and then we'll go back into executive session after that. So, anyway, welcome, everybody. I apologize we're a little bit late getting out here, but still working on city's business of many different kinds, so we'll move ahead with the regular agenda, which picks up with the Pledge of Allegiance invocation, and that's item four on the agenda, so I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll remain standing after that, Councilmember White will do the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight with grateful hearts, acknowledging your goodness in every season of our lives. We thank you for the beautiful fall weather that surrounds us, for the cooler air, the changing colors, and the sense of renewal it brings to our community. These simple gifts remind us of your presence and of your faithfulness. Lord, guide our thoughts, our words, and our decisions this evening. Grant us wisdom to lead with integrity, compassion, and unity as we serve the people of College Station. Bless our citizens, our city staff, our first responders, and all who work each day to make this community strong and vibrant. May your peace be with our citizens, and may everything we do bring honor to your name. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember White. We have a speaker protocol, which all of you that have picked up an agenda or have looked online, you know pretty much what it is. There are several people that have signed up to speak on a couple or three different items, so we will have a rather lengthy meeting, I'm sure, but everyone stays in their three-minute time slot. We'll be good, and I'll try to encourage people along as those items come up. So, we move on to the, I'll just flip the page, here are visitors, and here are visitors, I do have one person signed up to speak, former councilmember Elizabeth Kuna. Is she here? There she is. Welcome back.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Elizabeth Kuna. I live in Shenandoah in College Station, Texas, and I just wanted to take just a moment to recognize a shift in the narrative. For as many years as I've lived in College Station, when people have complained about their property tax bill, we've patiently explained that there are three contributors to the bill. There's the city, there's the county, and there's the school district, and that the city is not the largest contributor to that bill. That's the way it's been for all the over-three decades that I've paid the bill. But this year, when I opened up my bill, the narrative shifted, and so because it shifted, I just wanted to mark it in this way. For the first time, when I looked at my bill, the city of College Station was indeed the largest contributor to the bill, larger than the school district, which employs twice as many people, larger than the county. That is in part because the state legislature provided a nice homestead exemption for us. That's what causes the numbers to be different, but the numbers are different, and the narrative will have to shift, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that shift, and I appreciate the council's opportunity to use here visitors to mark that difference. Thank you.
Thank you much, very much, Ms. Kuna. Okay, that's the only person signed up for that item. We will now move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda has quite a few items. Let me just check here, 6.1 through 6.17. So, I'll ask councilmembers in their wisdom and discretion if there's any of those that they wish to have questions answered. Mr. Yancey, which one?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. Recognizing the lateness of the evening, I'm going to rapid-fire just a few questions on unfortunately the following, 2, 4, 10, and 13.
2, 6.2, 6.4, right, and what was the last one?
10 and 13, sir.
10, 6.10, and 13?
Yes, sir.
All right. Seeing nobody else raising their hand, item 6.2 is Ms. Kane. I'll read the header. Presentation, discussion, possible action, and city's indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, IDIQ list, where identified firms we pre-qualified to provide on-call-as-needed professional services for 22 different categories based on their qualifications. Ms. Kane?
Good evening, Jennifer Kane, Capital Projects.
Thank you for all you do, Ms. Kane. Sorry for the directness of the questions. First, an observation, I'm very happy to see Gessner Engineering on this list. I hope they are competitive and quality enough that we can use them soon in the future. I see there's two instances of Gessner, but how did HAF make this list, given the geo-test failure on the first go-round of baseball fields? Why are we giving them that opportunity, and why not withhold it until they do the right thing on that now three-year-old, two-and-a-half-year-old matter?
So, I may let Adam, if he wants to say anything, but we evaluated these independently, and we looked at them based on their qualifications that they submitted, and for the categories that they submitted, I mean, you need to see which one they were on, but it was not the same capacity that they worked on on the ball fields.
Thank you very much, Mayor. As one member of council, I don't think it's appropriate for them to get an indefinite duration, indefinite quantity status bestowed upon them unless and until the soil test failure is resolved satisfactorily. We've been talking about it forever. We still don't know what's next. May I move, sir, that we remove them from the list?
No, we're going through the questions first, and when we come back, we will vote on the entire group, and if you wish to withhold that for a separate vote, you may do so.
Thank you, sir.
So, 6.1, I think you're done with that comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 6.4, also for Ms. Kane. This one, presentation, discussion, possible action, and construction contract with Merrick Brothers, construction for the CSU operation expansion, amount of $2,653,150 plus the city's contingency, and the amount of $265,315 for appropriation of $2.2 million, $918,465. Approval of this item, grant authority to city manager to authorize project expenditures up to the city's contingency amount. Ms. Kane and Mr. Yancey.
Do I have this right, and I may not? I need your help. $2.653 million on construction of this 4,500-square-foot building, correct?
Yes.
And $1.202, where did I get that number? In design or expenditures to date? I presume most of that's design?
It is, yes, and this one is a little bit different when you look at the, because it's part of Electric's fund, so I just want to clarify this, it's a little bit different than what you normally see on capital projects, like on water streets or something else. And so, the total budget included, like the $5.15 million, that's a category that Electric has for multiple projects, and this one was one of the ones allocated to it. And so, a portion actually of that $1.2, I actually don't have the number off the top of my head for design, but some of that is funds that have been expended on other things in that same chunk of money.
Okay, so, design, that's the heart of my quandary. Design does not reflect better than 40% of the cost of this 4,500-square-foot building?
No, it was not, and I can find out that exact number for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Nichols.
Okay, we go to the next item you've called, which is 6.10. Presentation, discussion, possible action, and the Second Amendment to the Axon Enterprises for Mike Pavelka. Somebody, oh, there he is. Chief, yeah, thank you. Discussion, possible action, and the Second Amendment to the Axon Enterprise Incorporated, a 10-year master service agreement, adding an AI-assisted report writing for an increase of approximately $944,580. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Thank you very much, Chief, for your service to the city. First, an observation, not directed at the police department, $27,000 of this contract will go to Sourcewell under their group purchasing organization contract. If you look at all of the pieces, parts of this contract, 648, 664, and 710,000, ultimately they'll be paid $60,000 for negotiating this deal. I believe that the staff we have, the city of College Station, can do a much better, or at least equivalent, job of obtaining competitive pricing, and you pay for an FTE with this single contract alone. Now, to my question, Chief, AI, we jumped from a modest amount we were paying this company to a million dollars for AI, and I noticed under their contract, ethical AI development, Axon shelf, follow its responsible innovation framework, engage with the Ethics and Equity Advisory Council, EAC, for feedback. I'm reading through this contract. This AI is going to interpret your call. What is this going to do?
Yeah, so, this Axon is the parent company of all of our camera systems, our bodywear cameras, our in-car cameras. This particular product is called Draft One. It is going to pull the data off of the interactions we have and then create a narrative. So, it's going to, should reduce a significant amount of report-writing time. The officer will still have to go in, authenticate it, and clean up the report, but it'll create the substance from the interaction that they have on each of their calls for service. We spend a significant amount of time in report-writing. The belief is we could shave as much as 75% out of the time we spend in report-writing that then could put more FTEs back into the department, if you will.
Well, in the event that this doesn't work as advertised, you've built-in contingencies, protections to the taxpayer that we can get out of it, or have you seen this in action and you know it to work?
Yeah, I've seen it in action, and I've seen some tests that agencies have done with the product, very satisfied with the results that they got. We have consulted with the District County Attorney's Office to ensure that they're going to accept the reports based on the AI-generated material. So far, everything we've heard is very positive about the product.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. Just, I wish we could negotiate these contracts instead of...
Yeah, I'll just add real quickly on this one. Chief may have mentioned it a little bit, but this is the same contracts, the amendment to the same contract that we have for all of our bodywear cameras, everything that's outfitted in the tasers and everything. The actual contract's about $8 million contract, so...
Including the hardware?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And as I recall, this was a, if not a, service-level adjustment, it was in the budget?
Right, I was going to point out, this was when we discussed in the budget, one of the addition service-level adjustments for the PD, this was, this is the contract that fulfills that service-level adjustment.
Right, it was already in the budget. Thank you. Number 613, presentation, discussion, possible action, this must be for, let me get over to the other side. Carl? Yeah, there you go. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding ordinance, amending Chapter 38, traffic of vehicles, and it goes through, I won't bother to list it, a whole series of streets on which they will be no parking any time, or parking here to corner signs put in place, so if that's good enough reading, I think you can ask your question.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you for everything you do for the city. Relative to this, this is separate and distinct from the larger citywide, or potentially citywide, or South Side, East Gate parking discussions we've been having, correct?
Yes, sir.
I knew that, I just wanted you to clarify it for the record. It's burned us in the past where we did these, it has me, anyway, where I just thought everybody had been reached out to and talked to and cleared with, and I did reach out to the developers of the two neighborhoods where all these streets are, but my question is, and like y'all say, they are copacetic with it, like you say in your report, but were the citizens engaged relative to all of this parking that we're about to remove from the streets?
No, sir, they weren't. These actually came in with the final plat whenever they were, the developer was in the plating stage, so the signs are already out there. They exist, they just weren't on our parking schedule in the UDO, so this will codify them and have them in our parking schedule now.
So, it was part of the original plan?
Yes, sir.
So, there were no houses built at the time? This is following a standard procedure, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that's the last item that I have had inquiries about, so I will move to the council.
Mayor, I'd like a separate issue on HAF engineering, please, sir.
On item 6.2, okay, I'll have a motion on consent agenda, item 6.1 through 6.17, except for 6.2. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I didn't hear.
Move to approve.
And second from Mr. Smith. Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. We'll go back to item 6.2 that has been pulled for a separate vote.
Mayor, for purposes...
Have you heard the discussion? Do I hear a motion on that one?
Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to move to approve the list as assembled by staff with the caveat that we remove HAF engineering until our dispute with that engineering firm is resolved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I hear a second, okay. You wish to speak to your motion any further or not?
No, sir.
Okay, you wish to speak to your second? I have a question. Is HAF and associates already involved in contracts with the city?
So, removing them or them being on this would not affect any existing contracts. It would only, IDIQ, for those who don't know, is basically a list of pre-qualified folks that if we do certain small jobs, depending on what they fall within, we can utilize. So, if they were not on this, it wouldn't affect if they were doing anything else, or if they wanted to put in for any other future individual projects. It only affects anything we would give to people on this list moving forward.
Thank you. You've answered my question. Any further questions, comments?
I'd like to ask legal if there's any issue with us doing that.
Which part?
Removing them from the IDIQ list.
I mean, it's up to council to make the decision.
No, I just wondered if there were any legal caveats we needed to consider as part of that decision.
I think staff looked at the criteria and based the criteria on their past performances, but it's up to council to approve the list. So, I think council can do that.
And have we had any movement whatsoever on that interaction with them, with the geotechnical borings?
We're not posted to talk about that specifically now, but we are in discussions.
It's germane to the topic at hand. Okay, thank you.
Okay, as I understand the motion, it is to approve the list except for the inclusion of HAF and associates in whatever categories they're in, correct?
Copy that. Yes, sir, Mayor.
Okay, and that's your second, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signal by raising your hand and saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we move on to, that takes care of the consent agenda. We'll move on to the workshop agenda, which is two items. Item 7.1 will be presented by Mr. Cook. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding the tourism strategic plan. Jeremiah Cook, welcome.
Yes, sir, thank you. Jeremiah Cook, Assistant Director Tourism, and we're excited tonight to bring the pillars to the tourism strategic plan. And so, this is something that we began working on, had a contract approved last fall, and we've been working through it with our steering committee, which is the Tourism Committee. It's laid out by the council. And tonight, what we're bringing forward is the pillars for that plan. So, this is not official plan adoption. This is just the check-in to say, are we good with the six pillars that we're working on, and do we want to continue to flesh those out? So, that's what we're looking for tonight. Dan Fenton with JLL will be kind of leading the discussion here, and then we have two committee members also here with us, our chair, Courtney Phillips, and committee member Hunter Goodwin, that can also provide comments. We can also answer any questions at the end. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Dan.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thanks, Jeremiah, Mayor, Council. Happy to be here, look forward to going through this with you. I'm going to test the clicker. Okay, there we go. A couple of things. Great to have our committee members here with us, because I think it's representative of the process that we've gone through, and we're going to talk about some of the priorities that have come from our process, but I think it's important to state that the collaboration that went in to getting us here was very broad and significant, and there's been a lot of great input, and we'll talk about that as we go through this. And so, we certainly want to thank both the members of the committee and a lot of members of the community who have now been involved with this process, also some key members from Texas A&amp;M who have been a part of the interaction that will lead to some of the things that you're going to hear today. This is just a little bit about us, just the fact that JLL, this part of JLL works really across the nation when it comes to tourism strategic planning, destination planning, so this is a little bit about us. These are the three members of the team that are on here. This is just a little overview of, if you think about how you go through a strategic planning process, the listening phase, trying to analyze the data that you gather, thinking about what the strategies are, and then one of the things to Jeremiah's comment is we're going to come back, and you're going to see a little bit of this today, but assuming the council says we sort of like this direction, the next meeting when it comes to activate is, okay, how are you actually going to specifically make sure that these things come to life and that we will be successful in terms of our implementation? Couple of things here just to look at, you can see that we have met with a lot of different stakeholders, really listened carefully to people's thoughts about where the priorities should be, and when you think about tourism, we want to make sure that we are thinking about priorities that will, in fact, generate a combination of things, but certainly the economic side of tourism, that they will generate increased visitation, they'll generate an opportunity to continue to evolve both as a destination, and you'll see in a second also as a collaborative partner, if you will, in terms of how we go about what we're doing. These are three or four different specific analysis that we did, and a couple of ones I want to point out for today's conversation. One is the event matrix, which we're going to talk about, and the whole notion of how can we think about leisure events going forward, and the right one, very significant for today, is university benchmarking research. So, have had a lot of great conversations again with Texas A&amp;M, and you're going to see in a second how that has manifested itself into some of the, some of the priorities that have surfaced that we want to discuss today. So, we'll jump right into proposed strategies. One of the things that came out of the discussion with the committee, if you think about it, would be a natural part of a tourism plan to think about the integration and the collaboration with Texas A&amp;M, so if you think about that, seems like a fairly standard and very obvious, important part of this process. And I will tell you, one of the things that we did as a team is we met with, for example, provost office, admissions, athletics, recruitment, we met with a lot of different parts of the university, just to think about where could tourism efforts support some of the key initiatives within the university. And you'll see the first one that we've listed here, and that was partially came from a conversation with the provost office, is we talked about how we could, from a tourism perspective, become a key strategic partner when it comes to attracting and bringing academic conferences to College Station. What we did is we talked a lot about with a strategy like this, it's not so much just, let's go find conferences and try to bring them here, but how do you create a strategy that aligns with the university itself, so that it also supports the university's mission and brings conferences to College Station and to Texas A&amp;M. If you look at the left-hand side, we won't necessarily go through each one of these, but you can see that we have thought about with the committee, we've thought about specific tactics and specific things to go about creating the ability to be that kind of collaborator that we're proposing here. So, you hear, you see this first one about inventorying and thinking about where the opportunities are. We had an interesting meeting with the hotel general managers, and one of the general managers, as we're talking about this notion of how we can collaborate, he sort of looks at everybody and he says, if you think about the size of the faculty, so 4,000-plus members, and if you think about the fact that faculty members have, you know, have all sorts of tentacles and connections to associations or, or different sort of industry, if you will, agreements, you can see this note here that he speculated that there's probably over 10,000 meetings that exist, where you could see a connection back to some of the spectacular things that are going on at the university. So, you sort of step back and you think to yourself, there's actually a pretty big universe here that we could be thinking about together in terms of how we collaborate on bringing some of that, if you will, business to College Station, and you'll also notice that we've talked about here, and the committee is really very committed to this, is this is not a situation where we're recommending is, let's just make sure we're sort of good, good partners as we are today, but in this initiative, we're recommending a significant investment here in rethinking, you know, our current setup when it comes to structure, members of our team, how we bring certain expertise to this initiative, so we can really partner and produce opportunities in this that we work very closely with the university on. So, you can see here some of the different things that we've talked about in terms of creating a new team, creating people that are bringing people on who are really well-versed in sort of that whole notice of business development. You'll also notice here that there is a key part of this that says making sure there is really alignment here in terms of how we approach this initiative. So, this particular piece of, of the priorities that you see is a big one that the committee has put a lot of time and effort on, and really support the fact that we need to think about how do we invest in this new direction with resources to try to really make a difference in terms of how we can strategize on conferences, and again, remember that this is not just conferences for conferences' sake. This is conferences that align with the university's mission, with the department's mission, as part of ultimately the sort of successful initiative. So, this is one of the key areas within this sort of university portion of our recommendations that we wanted to talk about. If you look at the next one here, a little bit more on the initiatives related to bringing in the conferences, so you can sort of look through these, but you can again see this whole commitment to going out, finding, qualifying business, and really creating that relationship when it comes to how to bring some of those conferences, you know, to College Station. The next one that was talked about, this also still ties to the relationship, the proactive strategy with Texas A&amp;M, was this overall event management partnership. So, we listened carefully to a lot of stakeholders and a lot of people, both at the university and others, that said, how do we align ourselves when it comes to bringing more of some of these larger events to College Station slash in conjunction with the university? So, you can see here what we're proposing is, again, dedicating resources, so bringing resources to the table, being a strategic partner in how we go out and recruit some of the new larger events in conjunction with the university, and then again, having measurable goals for how many of these we want to see take place on an annual basis, and how can we use our collective resources to sort of join forces when it comes to bringing some of the large events to College Station. Next one here, if you look at, oops, I'm trying to go the wrong way. Next one here you'll look at is, this will kind of go through quickly, but in conversations we had when it came to recruitment, so we talked to the recruiters at the university, and they mentioned to us that here's an interesting statistic, which everybody probably knows, but for someone, this was, this was an eye-opener in a good way. They said they conduct almost 2,500 tours on a weekly basis when it comes to people looking at Texas A&amp;M as a potential university. And one of the things the recruiter said to us, is they said, we would love to see the tourism team work with us on improving that experience. So, how do we actually work together on looking at that recruitment experience and adding more to it as a way to help us when it comes to how we engage and how we attract students both to the university and obviously to College Station? So, you'll see here specific tactics related to how we want to invest in enhancing the student experience or that, that experience that goes on today, and if you look at the next slide, you'll see sort of more of that in terms of the different opportunities. But after we brainstormed with the admissions offices, we could really get a sense of the sort of excitement when we started talking about what the possibilities were. And one of the things that Jeremiah said is, he goes, if you think about this historically, you know, we will provide information, and then we'll sort of stop there, and we're here for questions. This strategy is, let's really look at what that itinerary looks like for those families, how we make sure that they have the experience when they're here, understand what's, what goes on in College Station, understand the whole picture, and you can see some of the key partners here that we've listed that would be part of this, and then how do we really partner on enhancing what that experience is from where it is today? The other thing that came up also in the recruitment area... The other thing that came up also in the recruitment area was as we were strategizing with the recruitment leadership, we then moved to the level of bringing new faculty or bringing new staff into the university, same thing, how can we enhance that experience when it comes to if we're recruiting new faculty members or recruiting senior staff levels? And you can see here again, we've come up with ideas in terms of how to really make sure that that sort of itinerary, when new faculty or new senior staff are being recruited, how can we support those efforts? A lot of interest from the university's side in how we can partner with this going forward. Again, you can see more of this, customizing itineraries, doing things with the provost office, you can see here, so a lot of thought has gone into this particular interface with the university. This one here talks about joint marketing strategy, so how do we collaborate with the university in terms of our collective messaging, and what are things that we can do together in that area, so you can see some of the opportunities there. If you go to this strategy, so those that we just went through were this collection of thoughts that the tourism committee feels strongly about, that we need to invest in going forward in terms of how we enhance and strategically enhance our collaboration when it comes to Texas A&amp;M and how we do that, and really can measure results going forward, which we'll talk about. The last one is, if you remember, I talked about this event matrix, so we studied 50 to 100 different events that currently go on in College Station. So we looked at them objectively, we looked at what the potential was, and we said to ourselves, how do we take collective tourism resources and really become a proactive player in future event development for College Station? So instead of necessarily perhaps being a sponsor of an event or making sure that an event was on a calendar, how do we get further into the event development area as a tourism team? A lot of interest in this from sort of the broader community, a lot of ideas here, so what we're proposing here, or what we want to work more on, is coming back to the council and saying, this is specifically what that structure would look like, and here's how we would measure success when it comes to new event development, looking at things that are going on today, and saying, how can we enhance them going forward? And we think this is one area that certainly has a relationship also with the university, but it also has the ability to really look at events that will draw from a regional audience, and that will bring people in from that distance to come in and experience College Station through the events that we want to work on developing or creating new events, and so that's the sort of last pillar that we want to talk about, that we think is an important one, has implications that are certainly tied to Texas A&amp;M, but also broader in terms of some of the areas that we think can be impacted through this initiative. So, and then the other part of this is, as we do this, are there opportunities to develop new signature events going forward, and what might that look like, and how do we use current tourism resources to be able to invest in that area? So just to summarize, and then I'll turn it back, as a matter of fact, I think we're going to, and I hope we can, ask our two committee leaders to come up here and just say a couple of words to everybody, but I want to go through just to recap, these are the six initiatives that Jeremiah was referring to. So this notion of how we partner on academic conferences, how we work together on the larger events, this idea of how we can enhance the recruitment, you know, relationship both with students as well as faculty and staff, how we can join forces on marketing and communication, and then lastly, this whole idea of continuing to build on current and future leisure events going forward. So mayor, council, I'll stop there, that was a overview of where we are, and I think as Jeremiah mentioned, we'd love to get your support to sort of keep moving on these initiatives, but let me stop and turn it over, Courtney, maybe you can start here, to two of our great committee members who have been a part of this.
Thank you, Ms. Courtney Phillips, who's chairman of the Tourism Advisory Committee. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, thank you, council. I just wanted to reiterate kind of what Dan said, the committee is behind these pillars, we've worked many hours, we've had many conversations, and these were created with, you know, the joint communication in it. The other thing is that we feel very strongly that we are in a position in time where we need to be more proactive with our tourism, we need to invest so that we're driving the ship a little bit more than we ever have before. And that's going to, I mean, Hunter can talk better than I can, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, council, mayor. I think I was set up by Dan, he picked the prettiest version of our committee and the ugliest one to follow, so I apologize. Just to echo what Courtney said, I think there was a lot of effort and time spent in developing these pillars. What jumps out at you, this is kind of stating the obvious, is that for us to be successful, we have to have direct integration into Texas A&amp;M. For 25 years, as long as I've been around here trying to do this, that's been a real challenge, so what would strike some optimism and hope? Maybe I'm just stubborn, but I think a couple of things that I think really present a unique opportunity for us to actually finally maybe knock the walls down that exist between the city and the university. One is PlayFly, a new multimedia rights partner that is going to come in effective July 1st of next year. They are very cutting-edge, very different, their approach is different. I think Texas A&amp;M, the university at large, is up for a big change on how things are done and run over there, especially with athletics. Two, the Aplin Center, and three, HMGT, there's a great correlation now with our efforts in College of Ag, the former very prestigious department with Dr. Schaefer used to run, RPTS, has now, I call it RPTS 2.0, we've shifted our focus more into the hospitality and restaurant management space. With that, we've seen a tremendous interest in enrollment, undergraduate enrollment is was kind of on a downward trend, we've turned, and now, it's funny, Dr. Crompton was concerned about how much, how are we going to handle the growth? So that integrates well into what's going to be the front door of really the campus, which is the Aplin Center. Beaver Aplin was generous enough to give the largest single donation to Texas A&amp;M $60 million, and he's building what will become the visitor center, the front door to Texas A&amp;M, in what I call the H-Lot, right across from the Texas A&amp;M Hotel Conference Center. And lastly, I'll say that last week, we had a meeting last Friday that was held at a, I guess adjunct campus, would might be the appropriate term, it will be a Texas A&amp;M campus, not a system school that's being built right now in Fort Worth, downtown Fort Worth, the site of the old, what's now the Texas A&amp;M Law School, I believe it was Wesleyan Law School years ago. The purpose of that meeting was really, how are we going to integrate programming done at HMGT with some of the efforts in the DFW marketplace? I will say that that meeting was really eye-opening for me, there were probably 75 very influential players in the room, John Goff, who runs Crescent Realty, was the chairman of that, it was integrated with some other efforts within the city of Fort Worth, and really gives us a chance to do some unique and wonderful things with partnering with our partners in Fort Worth. So the ask, as Dan said, is, we would hope you would continue to allow us to pursue this, I think we're at a point now where the hard part is forthcoming, we have to develop a plan on how to do this. But I am very encouraged that I think for the first time ever, for those of you that attended the George Strait concert last year, followed by the friendly soccer match, we saw the potentiality of this community, we saw what it could do, and I think we proved to the world that we're capable of some really amazing things. So we would just continue to ask you to allow us to pursue this and work to the most important part, which is the how-to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan, come back for a second, or, I think, was there some questions? I've got two, and I think probably at least one of them for Dan.
Great.
One of the overriding issues, I've been involved in these things for years, is our lack of airport connectivity.
Yep.
How does that fit in with this? How did you, how do you deal with that as you think about attracting academic conferences and so forth, the things the university is being encouraged to look at?
Yeah, no question that part of the outcome should be to continue to support new flight development, absolutely part of the bigger development area, and I don't want to, as an outsider, and I had a chance to experience this, we had a couple of conversations, for example, with some of the leaders in the agriculture department and others, and we really believe, and we had a conversation today about some of the different areas of Texas A&amp;M that are really like globally known, I mean, this is a situation where we are doing things that people want to be a part of, and we think that if we can bring what Hunter's talking about, Jeremiah talked about too, is if we can bring a level of support to that effort, that we can attract conferences to come, because if you think about it, the key here is that alignment with the university, it's aligning with some of the great things that we do, so that's got to be the driver, right? So yes, we want to work on new flight development, but we clearly think we've got a lot of unique opportunities within the university to create things that people are going to want to come to.
My second question would just be related to, you talked about new investment, and that may be something that would come out of the next stage.
Yep.
But I think the council and staff would be very concerned or interested, interested and concerned both in terms of fiscal impact and fiscal requirements for that investment. Not that it can't yield, you know, 200% return or whatever, but the upfront money is always a question.
Yeah, I think the thing, I think Hunter mentioned this, that one of the things the committee, and he really said this, so the committee was very focused on in this process was for us not to get up here and say, wouldn't it be great if? Right, but to really look at, what would it take to do this right, what kind of infrastructure, what kind of expertise, all the things that would go into this, and I think, mayor, you're hitting on another point too, and that is, we have to have metrics here. So what we don't want to do is come back with something that says, it would be great if we did this, and here's the expenditure, but what are the goals? And I think we want to come back, as Hunter mentioned, and be able to present all of that to you and the council.
Thank you. Other questions for Dan or for Jeremiah? Mr. White first.
Dan, thank you so much, it's super exciting to see this initiative getting underway. I love the partnership with A&amp;M, I think that's going to be huge. I'm a big association guy, y'all mentioned a little bit about bringing association business and conferences into this, I mean, we're in the perfect location, we've talked about it, that Texas triangle. Do we have, do we have the, you can call it infrastructure, do we have the meeting space available to bring in? I'm more familiar with the association side than the academic, you know, meetings, but do we have areas in the city that we can do a 100 exhibit hall, 100 booth exhibit hall?
So I think a couple of things, this is, it sounds like I'm not deferring the answer here, but I think to point about the actual implementation, we need to come back with that inventory. We have had meetings with some of the leadership at Texas A&amp;M about that, about the space there and where there are opportunities, we think there are opportunities, but two, whether it's hotel partners or other venue partners, if you think about a sales process, we want to make sure that we can arm the sales leaders with that ability to say, this is how we're going to do it. I will say this, and I know I'm stating the obvious when it comes to the hotel community, but there's a lot of interest in trying to figure out just what you said, so what exactly is that model? And the other thing I just want to say, and I know I'm repeating myself already a few times, but the lynchpin here is that marriage between the exciting things going on at the university and how it ties to that conference, and that's really the key to this, I think, successfully, and I think when you start thinking about it that way, we have a lot to talk about, you know, and we have a lot to differentiate ourselves with.
And we have a lot of opportunity.
That's right, yeah, we really do.
And we have a lot of ROI that could come out of that.
Yeah, and just a lot of great, because we've actually had to meet a lot of the even academic leaders in this process, and, you know, I know that we got to keep moving, but we could talk for, there's just all that, all that opportunity that's there, we think is exciting.
And as you mentioned, some of those university faculty or presidents or chairmans of the board of their association, and that's where we get that association, that will kind of compound it, thank you so much.
And to Hunter's point, just very quickly, the idea is that we can go to that leader, that academic leader, and say, we really have a plan, not just sort of theoretical support, but we're really going to support you on how that gets executed, and I think, mayor, that's what we want to come back, that's a resource piece that we want to come back and talk about.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hancey, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Dan, thanks for the presentation. A little bit disappointing on your rubber meets the road slide, that those things aren't happening already and all the time that our entities have coexisted, and I guess my ultimate point is, if we don't, it's obvious the city wants to engage, we hired Jones Lang LaSalle, and we're looking at it, and we're trying to amp up our tourism, but it takes two to tango, right? We're going to ultimately need Texas A&amp;M University or the systems support.
Yep.
What was your feedback in your engagements with folks?
Yep.
From the doer level to the administrator level, what, give us your sense?
Let's talk, let's start with the doer level a little bit, right? We do think there's going to be opportunities in this next phase to, I'm going to use the word empower, and maybe direct would be another phase, on how we do partner together when it comes to the point you're making, I think is, we need to have a strategy, it was kind of earlier talked about, the council member, about space and fluidity, and how do we book, and how do we make sure that we have a competitive process? A lot of receptivity there, but one of our steps, and even Hunter could come back and talk about this, but one of our steps that you'll see in here is really getting this organized and going to the administration, you know, going to the university administration with an organized plan here, so not necessarily just sitting down and talking about this in theory, and we believe that with their, when they see that the city, so obviously this would take council support, is really committed to engaging here in a proactive way and supporting in a very proactive way, what we're hoping is that helps what you're talking about in terms of saying, how do we, you know, how do we really make sure that we're locked and loaded, if you will? So from a standpoint of conversation, it's all positive, but that's still at the surface level.
So they're doing what they do.
Yep.
We're doing what we do, and there's this space in the middle where we're collaborating. I've seen, we've seen many of those across this dais that we've supported and whatnot. Are your performance metrics, when you get there and start defining them, going to be creating a positive delta of more things that aren't in their silo or ours, or that space of cooperation in the middle? You're trying to create more events.
That's correct, and we're trying to be able to do it through targeted and effective resources.
Yeah, and final note, in traffic, it takes longer to get from O'Hare to McCormick Center than it does from Drew Bush to here.
Right, correct.
So I don't really see, you know, and if we're successful at this, those additional flight itineraries, it'll come.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you very much for what you're doing.
Great.
Thank you. Other questions, Mr. White?
Sure, so I have a question regarding number six, the pillar, the sixth pillar, the leisure event strategy.
Yep.
You know, right now, we have, we have some things that are being talked about, planned, multi-event center, early phases of just discussion on it, we have an RFP out for folks that want to use Wolf Penn differently, which is, I'm sure you're familiar with. Is part of this study, especially the data-driven part, going to be like a min-max? I do believe there is a point where, because the market's kind of barren right now, that we could very quickly oversaturate it with events.
Yep.
Will that be a recommendation, that minimum, you should probably be doing this number of events, and probably don't go over 200 nights a year or something like that?
Let me say yes, but I want to put yes in quotes there, because I think there's a min-max part of that, and then there's also the point of what events do we want to have?
Sure.
And I think that part of what we're advocating for here is to be able to come back and say, this is really how we're going to assess events when it comes to, are they the right event? And so it's both number and right, and the other thing is putting resources and time into really collaborating, but very much in-depth with event organizers, because this is more, the key thing here is this is more than just saying we're going to sponsor events, this is saying we're going to get involved with trying to figure out which ones I think council member are going to have the most impact. So it really should be both mid-max, or it should probably be a calendar that we all look at together and say, this is what we're trying to do, but again, are they the right events?
And it's not just about selling and promising, it's about servicing the events while they're here, which is one of the things that I think our tourism group has really built to try to do with, certain sectors are already working with, but it's servicing them while they're here is another key point, because you want to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One question.
Ms. McLean.
Sorry I bolted during your presentation, a little emergency at the house, but anyway, as I'm looking through these, we've got five of the six are very heavily Texas A&amp;M-centric, and granted, I mean, they are right across the street, and they are big, and they would be a phenomenal partner in just about any venture, are we missing? be a phenomenal partner in just about any venture. Are we missing any opportunities outside of A&amp;M that aren't necessarily captured in this leisure, leisure event strategy? Are we putting all of our eggs in one basket, so to speak?
Yeah, I think that the way I would, I would characterize that is that the breadth within the leisure event strategy is really significant. So that it, I think sometimes people tend to think of that as at like three or four events and that's it, or what is that? We really, and the committee was very focused on a myriad of opportunities there. And part of the reason to think about this at this stage is, when it comes to new brick and mortar, so let's talk about a new attraction or a new this, you'll notice we haven't talked about that here because we do want to make sure that this, that one of the outcomes of this plan that the council can see now is we're trying to come up with recommendations that we know we can move on, right? But your point about longer term, could there be strategies in terms of asset development? We'll come back and talk more about that, but we really wanted to sort of focus on these today, but it's a good point.
Okay. I see no other hands raised. As I, Jeremiah, why don't you come back up and your, I think you're getting a pretty positive response from the group up here, but I, I don't know how, how, what form you want that response in?
Yeah, if, if the council is approving of these six being the pillars that council wants to move forward, which is positivity that we're hearing, then we'll move forward with bringing the action items back in the true plan of a form in the future.
I guess my only reservation would be exactly what Ms. McLean just raised, and that is, there's a big world out there that doesn't all depend on the university. I think it, probably the, the low-hanging fruit is right there. Having been 44 years working in the faculty at Texas A&amp;M, I've often wondered why we don't have more interaction and more attraction for that. So I, I would hope that if you want to call this six pillars, that number six is much broader than the other five, and that probably doesn't need to be forgotten.
For sure.
I think that's sort of a feeling.
And I would not say they are equal in, in extent or equal, like it is not like number two is going to take the same amount of time as number one or number three, right? These are, that would be more fully fleshed out in the true plan.
I guess the word pillars maybe is what makes me think that you were talking about equal structural pillars, and only one of them deals with anything outside the university. So Mr. Mr. White has experience in this field.
Thank you so much for, for, for making all this. This is, don't read in between this. This, does, does City of Bryan have a tourism strategic plan?
I would guess so.
You think so?
I would, I think so. Yes, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a 100%.
Are you familiar, you're not, did, did they look at, did the committee look at that plan, if they have it? Not that we want to do, I just was curious if our sister city has a strategic plan to, to bring in visitors.
Their organization's called Destination Bryan, which I think does have a pretty clear strategy. Anyway, I don't know how it's embedded, but that's certainly, certainly something we ought to be looking at, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. And I, I think what I would say about that is that we have two different organizations going after two different things, right?
I understand.
And so I think that that's the conversation, is that there's places we collaborate, places that we go on our own. Our staff is extremely meetings-focused, as you see through these lines, which is something that maybe they focus a little bit less on. And so the excitement of this is that this would be the first strategic plan under Visit College Station.
Gotcha.
And so this would be our first true strategic plan just for tourism.
Very exciting. Thank you.
Okay. I don't think I'm overstepping my bounds by saying that it sounds, seems to me that you have a, a good committee to work with, obviously, and they seem to be excited about what this project and, and planning activity has brought to them. And if they are excited about it, then we will be excited about it for sure because they are an important committee that represents the council and the city in, in these endeavors. So is there any objection to endorsing where they are and telling them to go forward? I see nodding of heads, and if that's good enough for you, then we, we'll move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 7.2 on our workshop agenda. Thank you for making the presentation, Dan, and, and committee members. Appreciate you being here. Item 7.2, presentation discussion, possible action on Texas A&amp;M off-campus student services presentation. Barbara Moore is going to introduce this and the, the participants. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Barbara Moore, University and Community Relations Manager. And to, this evening, we have with us Assistant Director Jaclyn Upshaw Brown and Community Liaison Nikki McDaniel to talk about some of the activities of the Off-Campus Student Services Office. As many of y'all know, the office was reestablished in 2023 by the General Brigadier Joseph Ramirez, and now it is headed by Dr. William Kibler. And the group will talk tonight about some of their activities, some of the ways we've partnered, and some of the things you can see from them going forward.
Thank you. Welcome to, welcome to the podium, and we look forward to your update. Recall, you have been here before.
Yes.
Thank you for coming back.
Howdy. Well, thank you for inviting us up to provide a quick update.
Just introduce yourselves again for us.
Absolutely. I'm Jaclyn Upshaw Brown. I'm an Assistant Director in Student Life, and I oversee our Off-Campus Student Services team.
And I'm Nikki McDaniel. I'm the Community Liaison for Off-Campus Student Services.
Okay.
All right. So, oh, I guess we're gonna let Nikki start it off and just let you know a little bit about where we are situated in our department.
Okay, so Off-Campus Student Services is situated within Student Life. We work to learn and to teach our students the holistic method as to how to get along, how to work throughout the campus. So we work with different ones. So we work with Student Assistance Services for basic needs and support. We partner with SMVP, which is Substance Misuse Violence Prevention, and that's for party smart programming. We also work with NSFP, which is the New Student and Family Programs, and that's to deliver information to families and students. And we also connect the students with our student attorney and for legal advice. What we do, so in a nutshell, our department exists to provide education, outreach, and support to our students to help them succeed. Throughout this presentation, we'll share different updates about Off-Campus Student Services and how and what we've done over the past year.
All right. In the area of educational programs, some highlights for you. The first thing is, we had a pretty, I guess, an increase in presence in our new student orientation that all incoming students undergo this past summer. So it's a two-part orientation process. And for several years, we've had some content about off-campus living in the mandatory online orientation that students complete prior to coming to campus for their new student conference. So we continue that. It provides information about living off-campus, about local city ordinances, how to be a good neighbor. But this year, for the first time, we were asked to create an interactive 45-minute presentation that all students had in person when they came for their new student conferences. So we reinforced that information about living off-campus, but we also asked them to engage in some practice when it came to how would you handle common challenges with your neighbors, with your roommates, with your landlord? How do you be a good neighbor within the community of Bryan College Station? And I think they had a great time. It was successful, and they learned a lot based on what we're seeing with them coming into the office and, and following up on that throughout the semester afterward. We've also enhanced our efforts to provide some information related to safety and security for the students living off-campus. So that's everything, ranging from fire prevention awareness, their personal safety, home security, things to keep in mind if they're traveling away from their College Station home during holidays and breaks and so forth. And that's come in the form of printed materials that we provide at different occasions and also digital content. And then when it comes to online engagement, of course, very important with our students of today. So our departmental social media accounts are used to share a lot of information that's helpful for students. Last week, they were quizzing students on the rules of the road when you're riding a scooter or bike around town and providing some clarification for the students who may have been a smidge off-base on some of those things. But it's, it's fun to watch kind of the educational content, the engagement that they get with the students in an approachable way for our population. We have also conducted some virtual leasing workshops, both targeted to students and also some families of incoming students who might be a little overwhelmed by the prospect of choosing housing for their students for the following year. And we've contributed some parent and family articles to a platform managed by our new Student Family Programs Office that provide information, again, for families that they need to know in supporting their off-campus students. So that platform's called Campus ESP, and they have 120,000 family members with accounts. They shared earlier this week that they have an open rate of, it's like 75,000 people who read this monthly newsletter that comes out. So when we have information to share with family members, it's a really good way to reach them. And we have recently been going through the process of launching a special, special off-campus families community within that platform so that we can be a little bit more strategic and targeted in sharing that information with parents and families.
Okay, so our outreach. Of course, the city has graciously helped us host the carnival. Our carnival, we had 1,500 attendees. We also had truly positive feedback from our students showing and telling us that they enjoyed everything from the food to the resources, the local resources, different things like that. We also hosted a party smart watch party, which it was an away game, and we hosted it in an alcohol-free environment. We had partners from city code enforcement, UPD, University Police Department, UHS, University Health Services, and we also had Texas AgriLife bring their driving simulator. So that was a huge success also. We would like to give a special thanks also to the city. We collaborated together on what we called the Hall and Help Donation Drive. This was our first year doing it. We had a passion. The city, they did not want a lot of newly nice-used equipment and different furniture going to the landfills. In turn, we wanted the students to give something back to Bryan College Station, and both, both passions were truly achieved. We were able to bless and help numerous families. The students were able to do that, and we were also blessed to not have a lot of items go back into the landfill. We've had community luncheons where we put together the local residents and our students in a room in a roundtable setting to help us just come together, give positive feedback towards each other, uplift each other, meeting greets. And we've also hosted numerous presentations with our Aggie Moms Club and other groups around Texas A&amp;M.
All right. And then finally, on the support piece, a little bit to share with you about our individual consultations. So this is, a student is having some sort of issue, reaches out to the department and is connected with us for off-campus housing support. We saw over 120 student cases for last academic year, which was our second year of existence. But looking at the numbers from summer of 2025, there was a 200% increase in those consultations over the summer. And I have to credit those new student conference presentations for a lot of that, making students more aware that we're there to support them. We, of course, do not have our final numbers for fall of '25, but it has felt very busy. So I'll be curious to see what that looks like. When we receive those consultations, issues addressed, or anything ranging from a landlord or a maintenance issue to I'm having a roommate conflict, we are all trained mediators, so we can help address some of those things. Housing search assistance, pretty broad variety of questions that we do receive. And a lot of times, we can point them in the right direction, but we'll also connect them with additional resources, whether that is basic need support or legal advice, any of our campus or community partners who might be able to help them out. I also wanted to share a little bit about our Good Neighbor Network. I know we talked about that about six months ago. We did have our application cycle for the current academic year. We've got 30 properties who applied this year, which is about a 50% increase over last year. So I feel a bit good about that growth. We did bring onboard some properties in different parts of town and different price points, which I think is good to offer a variety of properties within that network. And I have to say, there haven't been a lot of issues with our Good Neighbor Network properties, but we have been able to bring about an expedited resolution of some maintenance issues where, you know, unfortunately, sometimes we'd find it was August and everyone had just moved in and someone's maintenance request was buried in a pile of 1,200, and the manager just hadn't become aware of it yet. Maybe there was a slow response, but by having those open lines of communication, we were able to get things moving a little quicker. Or, you know, I'm having an issue with my roommates and it's just not gonna work, so maybe we can get people moved into different units to help out with that. But again, not a lot of issues. It's gone very smoothly. And then finally, I wanted to share a little bit about what our department is calling micro-engagement. So we've come to recognize that a big blowout event is not always the best way to connect with students. Sometimes a small-scale program where they're able to connect more one-on-one with staff members and other students is very meaningful to our students who are overwhelmed in this large environment often. So we've been hosting a variety of these programs, whether it's inviting them into the Student Life Center to do an activity or meet others who have similar interests, or going out to the apartment communities to put up a table and answer questions they may have about living off-campus wherever they are. To just hop in on a golf cart with some goodie bags and going around and introducing ourselves, maybe asking them a question that will help us understand more about our students' needs. But we have been connecting with a lot of more, a lot more students one-on-one in that way this semester. And with that, those are the, the highlights of what we wanted to provide, but we are definitely open to answer any questions you may have for us.
I got one or two, and then we'll see if others have. Go back, go back to that previous slide.
Yes.
The Good Neighbor Network, as you know, intersects tremendously with some concerns that we've had.
Sure.
And we're pleased to know, at least I am pleased to know, that you've introduced that effort. A 50% increase over last year, well, that's just a startup kind of thing. 30 properties represents how many beds or bedrooms?
I don't have a total number of beds. I could get it, just haven't added it up. Some of them are pretty large.
Well, I'm comparing that with what I hear is something like 40,000 or 45,000 students that live off-campus in the City College Station.
Right.
And certainly in Bryan as well, because you cover some of those properties in Bryan, that's for sure.
Yes.
My gut, my question is, do you have a goal? Are you pushing that to try to get that to 60, 80, 100 properties? I don't have a real idea. Obviously, the Apartment Association is involved in, in this somehow. At least you've worked with them because many of these properties are members of that.
We've, we've had some help from them, sharing the opportunity. I don't have a set number that's a goal. Honestly, the more collaborative and communicative we can be with local properties, that I think the better it'll be. So we did make some efforts to hit the, hit the streets with some flyers and share with some properties, again, that may not always identify as student housing, but we still have a lot of students living everywhere. So, yeah, we're, we're working on it.
I guess one metric would be how, how much you, how many inquiries you get prior to people signing contracts, particularly among freshmen coming from elsewhere, that actually look at that list and use your list as it's intended.
Sure.
To kind of share with families and potentially prospective students. These are, these are properties that you can count on, at least with this guard to the list of ethical practices that they will consider or will, will, will provide.
Commit to, yes.
And so do you have much, do you have a, a count on how many times that part of the website gets hit, or?
Again, I'm afraid I do not, but I, I could probably work with our vendor that hosts the website and provide that.
Anything you can do, and I know working with Barbara, she gets these same kinds of concerns and questions from us.
Sure.
The more you can do to enhance and, and promote that
Right.
Good Neighbor Network is certainly, I think, beneficial to the entire community as citizens as well as the renters.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions? Do I see any? Mr. White?
Yes, thank you so much. Very informative. Glad that, that we're doing the outreach and, and it sounds like it's very, very positive. Glad that, that we're doing the outreach and, and it sounds like it's very, very positive. Couple of things that I, that I want to bring. I see that you actually do a, a kind of engagement with code officers.
Yes.
How did that go? I thought, I think that's fascinating to, to, to work with some code officers. Was that well received?
Sure. I mean, we, the way that it works is we pick a day. We're actually doing one next week in a neighborhood that has been nominated by our code enforcement partners. And we put together some bags of information around, again, local ordinances as well as just some Good Neighbor Party Smart practices that, again, our code enforcement people believe the residents of that neighborhood could benefit from receiving. And so we put together a team. I think we have paired up one or two university staff members with a code officer or two and walk through that neighborhood and knock on doors and greet the students and just provide a friendly face and say, hey, we're providing some information. And I think the students have been very friendly and appreciative of the outreach.
I think it's a great program.
Thank you.
One last, one last thought and, and I wanted to compliment you again. It sounds like your, your newsletter outreach, 75,000 to the, to the family and to the, to the students is outstanding. Do y'all put any there about see it, click it from the city? Do y'all, do y'all do any promotion on that program that the city has?
Yes, we have been sharing about see, click, fix in presentations that we do, our leasing presentations, as well as content for how do we handle an issue with a property. We do try to include that.
Thank you all for your work. Very good.
Thank you.
Other, Mr., Ms. McLean, I'll start with you. And then we'll go to Ms. Chancy.
Thank you, Mayor. So it might be interesting to see you guys cross-post with our City of website, our Facebook, social media, all, all, all the places. And I, for one, would be very excited to see the rules of the road that you're sharing with students, because I'm not really sure what those rules are. And drive through the Texas Walton, New Main intersection a couple of times a day and I, I feel very uninformed as to rights of, and I don't know that I am playing by the same rules as the, 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 those on scooters and bikes and unicycles and all the things.
You are not alone in your confusion, I am afraid.
I'm, I'm glad to know that.
Ms. Chancy?
On your, thanks for the presentation. On your health-related violence prevention, suicide prevention, substance abuse counseling, pregnancy outreach and assistance, are you guys working with the County Health Department, Brazos County Health District at all? Because they have a lot of resources, licensed counselors, they can even provision some healthcare services that are reduced or, or at no cost. And I'm just wondering, are y'all facilitating that connection, that resource?
Yes, so we have invited them to functions. I believe they were at the carnival to provide information. Those specific areas are not necessarily within our direct wheelhouse. Those are areas where we do connect students to our partners in university health services and substance misuse and violence prevention. So there may be more partnership going on there than I am aware of, but we, we have had a presence from them.
Okay, I saw that in your slide. You're saying you hand those off to a university resource and there may be collaboration between the county?
There may be more than I am aware of, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you very much.
I think that the same thing probably goes for the, the minors in possession education program, which I think our municipal judge has long been involved in training and education for, for young people that are cited for minor in possession. I think in the last year, he has worked to make that become part of what your program, not, not in your off-campus student, but in the alcohol awareness group, is that correct?
Yes, he's worked very closely with Dr. Lauren Dorsett, who oversees that substance misuse violence prevention team to streamline those processes and kind of collaborate, make sure that they're rowing in the same direction, not duplicating efforts so that they can meet that need more effectively.
Yeah, I think they have, they have a regular class of some kind, correct?
Yes, the Alcohol Education Workshop.
The ones that are referred there from the municipal court have to have completed that and signed that they've been completed and then he works with them on expunions and that sort of thing.
Yes, correct.
Great, thank you. Anything else from anyone else? Thank you both for your update and presentation. We thank you for doing that. I think there's lots more to be done, but you are pointing in the right direction. We work certainly with Barbara Moore and, and her staff to try to keep up to date on it, but it's good to have you here as well.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Anything further, Barbara? From you? I should have brought you back up here before they left.
That's okay. Taitlin just reminded me a little while ago that they are also our partners, along with the President's Office of Community Engagement, to bring the 2026 International Town and Gown Conference here to College Station, May 19th through 22nd of 2026. So we're super excited about that. Dr. Schaefer went this year. It was at Kent State University in Kent, Ohio, and we are super excited to welcome people from around the country and around internationally as well here to College Station to learn more about Town and Gown operations. So they've been great partners with us, along with the President's Office for Community Engagement, and we're looking forward to bringing that conference here next year.
Thank you very much for reminding me of that. We're definitely supporting that program. Okay, that takes care of our workshop agenda. We'll now move to the regular agenda, which many of you are here to learn about and to participate in. Item 8.1 is a public hearing, presentation, discussion, and possible action regarding an ordinance amending Appendix A UDO Article 4, Zoning District, Section 4.2, official zoning map of the Code of Ordinance at City College Station, Texas by changing the zoning district boundary from R Rural to GS, General Suburban, for approximately 237.65 acres, generally located on Greensprayer Road, east of the intersection of Greensprayer Road and WS Phillips Parkway. Ms. Maseas is the staff responsible person and will make her presentation first, and then we will hear from our P&amp;Z representative, and then we'll go to the open meeting.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. City Council, Robyn Maseas, Planning and Development Services. Tonight's request is to rezone approximately 237 acres from R Rural to GS, General Suburban. This lot is one of the last remaining large acres of undeveloped property that is within the city limits. It is along Greensprayer Road and adjacent to a residential subdivision that is in the ETJ and Greensprayer Reserve subdivision. This property is designated as Suburban Residential on the Conference of Planned Future Land Use map. Suburban Residential is primarily single-family residential areas that consist of low to moderate density, single-family lots. Development types tend to be consistent with a subdivision of a neighborhood. The intent is to accommodate sidewalks and lighting, encourage community facilities, parkways, and greenways within the neighborhoods, and to provide pedestrian and vehicular connectivity to adjacent developments. About 47% of the city is designated as Suburban Residential on the Conference of Plan. Like I mentioned earlier, the request tonight is to rezone the property from R Rural to GS, General Suburban. Other subdivisions in this area that are zoned General Suburban are Castle Gate 2 and Brewster Point. Castle Gate and Creek Meadows are zoned PDD with a base of General Suburban. And Greensprayer Reserve is zoned PDD with a base of Restricted Suburban, but does have modifications to allow for areas with a minimum lot area of 4,600 square feet and other areas to allow for townhome developments with a minimum lot area of 3,450 square feet. This item was heard at the September 18th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting where they voted against the proposal. This item was originally scheduled for the October 9th City Council meeting, but the applicant did decide to pull that item from that meeting in order to host two public meetings. Each one had about 15 attendees. The majority of concerns that we heard were regarding the maximum allowable density and the potential builder. So while the maximum allowable density is eight units per acre in General Suburban, it isn't attainable given the requirements for infrastructure, drainage, parkland, and streets. The city has reviewed this resoning request against the criteria in the UDO and recommends approval. I am available for questions and the applicant is as well, and they do have a presentation.
Okay. Any questions for staff before we get to the applicant's presentation? You will, after the, after the, I want the presentation from the applicant before the P&amp;Z person. The P&amp;Z chairman will speak after, after that, but before the public, the list of 22 members that have signed up to speak. Any questions for staff? Okay, then I guess we would like the applicant to come forward and, and make their presentation. And then I see Jason Cornelius, Chairman of our P&amp;Z, back in the back, and he will be available for any question you might have or just simply tell us how they got to their, their recommendation.
Good evening. My name's Adam Kurtz. I'm with D.R. Horton. Address is 736 Southern Point Parkway. We are submitting the rezoning request so that we can move forward with the development that will be our flagship community in the College Station market. The community will have a large well landscaped and impressive entrance monument and will provide community amenities such as a pool, playgrounds, parks, and walking trails. The entrance, the pool, and the playground will be constructed in the first phase of the development, and the walking trails will be constructed as each phase is developed. We have experience developing a master, master planned community and will add to the value of the area. And given that we will be building and selling in this community for approximately 10 years, we have a vested interest in making sure this is a successful community. That being said, after going through the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, it was apparent some of the nearby residents have some concerns about the development proposed on the property. In order to get a better understanding of the residents' concerns, we held two community meetings at our office. In the first community meeting, we showed the concept plan that we were proposing for the community, along with the future land use plan, future thoroughfare plan, drainage area maps, and traffic maps. We received feedback from a number of the residents that attended, and the consistent themes of the feedback were that the adjacent residents would like some separation or step-down density between their lots and the lots we're proposing. The residents were concerned about the connectivity between the communities. The residents had concerns about the building materials on the homes, and the residents were concerned about traffic on Greensprayer Road. We took the feedback from the residents and we worked with our planners to mitigate the concerns as best as possible and scheduled a second community meeting to present some possible solutions. At the second community meeting, to help with concerns from the adjacent property owners, we presented two different options. I believe we have exhibits of those. I don't know if they can pull them up, but we were going to pull them up on here. One of them, Option A, which I believe they're pulling up now, is, yes, this is Option A. A little hard to see on here. You might want to zoom in just a little bit. But we're proposing for all of the lots that are bordering the Sweetwater community and the lots that are bordering the Greensprayer Reserve community. We're proposing a 20-foot setback or 20-foot buffer between the edge of that property and the back of our lots that would back up to their property. And additionally, we also offered to do RS zoning for the lots that back up to that buffer. That was the first option. That gives a little bit of separation. And it would also create a limit to where there's no, no structure is going to be within 60 feet of the outer property line of our proposed development. And we would also have privacy fencing at the back of, at the rear property line of all of our lots. Now, Option B is the other option, if you could, if you don't mind pulling that one up. And in this option, you might need to zoom in a little bit on this one as well, we proposed a 50-foot linear park bordering Sweetwater and also any of the lots in Greensprayer Reserve where the lot width is larger than 50 feet, which is the majority of the Greensprayer Reserve border. The only area of the Greensprayer Reserve proposed development, future development, is a little closer to Greensprayer Road. And based on the information we've seen, that appears they have 50-foot lots that back up directly to our property line. We would not have the 50-foot linear park there, but we would have it for the other border to Greensprayer Reserve. And additionally, I guess any lots backing up to that 50-foot linear park, we're offering to put a minimum lots width of 60 feet, and we will have privacy fencing that backs up to that linear park as well, trying to create as much separation as we can. And with this scenario, there's actually, you're actually 75 feet from the outer property line of our property to the nearest structure that would be developed on the property. We're really okay with either option. Some of the feedback that we have gotten is that some people would prefer Option B more so than Option A. And additionally, I know there were some concerns about the overall density, and there seemed to be some confusion going out there about how much, how many lots we would actually put, which I know was mentioned earlier. But just to make sure that everyone understands, we are not proposing to do the eight units per acre, and we're willing to agree to a cap of 880 single-family lots on the property. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that it is, we're not trying to do eight units per acre. Even if we were, it's not physically possible. So with respect to the connectivity concerns, the Sweetwater residents were concerned about a connection to Whipper Will Drive, which you can see, there's a little arrow at SF1, there's a little cul-de-sac off of Sweetwater Drive. That's, that is Whipper Will. That's really stubbed out to the property line of our property. According to the code, we are required to connect to that. If the council wants to waive that requirement, we are okay not making that connection, but we are required to do that per the code. And so that's what we are proposing, but we are open to not making that connection if you will allow it. The Greensprayer Reserve residents were concerned about the minor collector that would be required to connect to Oldham Oaks Avenue. The future thoroughfare plan approved by the city requires this connection. This is required, anything that would be developed on this property would require this connection. Again, we are not necessarily pro or against this particular connection. We are willing to remove it if that would be allowed. However, that procedurally, I'm not sure that that would be, that this is the appropriate venue for that. And so I think tonight, we're considering the rezoning of the property. To change the future thoroughfare plan would actually require an amendment to the future thoroughfare plan. And so what we are proposing is that we are willing to submit an amendment to the future thoroughfare plan to be discussed at a future meeting. And whatever the results of that would be, we are willing to plan our preliminary plat around that. But our propose, our request tonight does not have anything to do with that, and I don't believe procedurally, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, that that is something that is possible to be done tonight. So in regards to the concerns on the building materials, we are willing to commit to masonry on four sides of the homes for all the perimeter lots that border Sweetwater and Greensprayer Reserve. And we are willing to commit to the masonry requirements on the interior lots that are similar to masonry requirements within Greensprayer Reserve. There will be a mix of materials, just for aesthetic reasons and different styles of houses, such as Craftsman or Farmhouse, but we are committing to do masonry on, on the houses. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that. And then for the traffic concerns on Greensprayer Road... And then for the traffic concerns on Greens Prairie Road, we will be required to perform a traffic study to offset the impact from the additional tra- uh, traffic according to the traffic impact study per code. And we will be required to mitigate the impact as required by the code. This is a valid concern that the residents have, but the city has all the codes in place to help make sure that this is properly handled. In addition to, in addition to the previously mentioned efforts we have made to address the residents' concerns, it is important to note that the City of College Station commissioned a housing study titled College Station Housing Action Plan, which was produced in twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. The report states sixty-nine percent of workers commute from outside the city limits in College Station, which is a pretty staggering number, and which I know is not a surprise to you all. Forty-five percent of the workers live outside of the county. All of these workers are still coming into the city every day and contributing to the traffic in the city, but they're spending their income on housing and consumer goods outside of areas that produce tax revenue to improve the infrastructure within the city. By twenty thirty, it is estimated the report, in the report, that the City of College Station will be short forty-two hundred units. By twenty thirty, our proposed development only makes up about five to ten percent of that shortage. The report produced a consistent theme. The theme is to create and incentivize more housing units and more diverse housing types by creating a proposal for two strategies. The first strategy is allow and encourage increased density, with the action items being amend the U D O to allow for greater density and housing variety, rezone areas to allow for increased density, create a process for expediting permitting or reducing fees for affordable housing. The second strategy is encourage and allow infill development, with the action item being explore opportunities for infill development when amending the U D O or rezoning for greater density. In closing, we believe that our proposed rezoning is in line with the five rezoning criteria items to be evaluated for the rezoning request, which are whether the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, the comprehensive thoroughfare plan and the housing action plan, which were all commissioned and approved by the City of College Station. Whether the uses, number two would be whether the uses of permitted by the proposed zoning district will be appropriate in the context of the surrounding areas. We are requesting G S zoning with a cap of eight hundred and eighty single-family lots, which is a gross density of three point seven lots per acre. This is in line with the combined density of Castle Gate one, Castle Gate two, Creek Meadows, Castle Rock and Greens Prairie Reserve, which combined equal thirty-six hundred lots in the immediate area around the development and result in a density of three point seven lots per acre. Number three would be whether the property to be rezoned is physically suitable for the proposed zoning di- district. The property is out of the flood zone and does not have wetlands and is physically located in a residential area, so it is physically suitable for the proposed zoning. Number four, whether there is available water, wastewater, stormwater and transportation facilities generally suitable and adequate for the uses permitted by the proposed zoning district. All necessary facilities are in the area and available for use by the proposed district. Number five, the marketability of the property. Given the success of the surrounding communities being developed for single-family residential, it is clear that single-family residential is marketable for this property. With all of that being said, there are a number of people here tonight who are in support of our proposal, and I'd like to ask them to stand up for a few minutes. All of these people are College Station residents, and they all want this development to happen. In the interest of saving time, most of them will not speak tonight, though some may still choose to do so. It is important for the council to know there are people here in favor of providing this type of housing community. We thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and ask for your approval of this rezoning request.
Thank you. Now, why don't I just stay there if you're not, unless you have somebody else coming forward, but maybe some questions from council. Mr. Wright?
Howdy. About, I don't think you mentioned in your presentation, but, uh, what price range you shooting for, for the homes you wanna put out here?
We're estimating our price range to be somewhere between three hundred and fifty and six hundred thousand.
And that is, you know, I would not, I, nothing against that at all. I would not say that's obtainable housing or affordable housing by that definition in the least. It sounds like you're putting a product on the ground that is offered by any other neighborhood in typical of this zoning, this density. So I just kinda wanna put that immediately out there, that six hundred thousand dollars would not, I think, qualify in that range.
That, that what?
That I would not call that obtainable housing, which is what a lot of emails have said, that it's affordable housing, obtainable housing. I wouldn't, that's, I'm not.
Right.
Not saying anything negative about your product particularly. I'm just saying that that is not anywhere in the realm of what I would consider obtainable or affordable housing.
I think by comparison, the report also says that the, uh, average sales price in College Station is around four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So having a starting sales price of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars by comparison to the average is more affordable.
A BMW is cheap compared to a Rolls-Royce, right? But they're still both expensive sports cars, so, okay, thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, and, and let me first applaud you for, for pulling this down earlier and having those two public hearings. We really appreciate that. That, uh, that's great to give the community. Let me just jump to, to kinda some of the questions that, that I think a lot of, um, uh, individuals that I received emails from are curious. I think density is gonna be a big, a big discussion. Can you do what you wanna do with residential suburban?
Uh, no, I don't believe we can do that.
And why is that? Tell me, tell me why, because it seems like the parameters that you just mentioned would fit under that zone.
So the resident, the R S zoning, um, requires an average lot size of ten thousand square feet, with a minimum width of, I believe, seventy. Now, you can go lower, but for every lower, you, you can go down to, I think, a six thousand square foot lot. But for every six thousand square foot lot you do, you have to offset that with a fourteen thousand square foot lot, because the average has to be ten thousand square feet. And so I think that a, a case study that we could use to analyze that would be Greens Prairie Reserve next door. And originally, that property was R S, the complete, that, that was R S. Now, um, they built some beautiful homes in there. It's, it's a great looking community. I think that, uh, you know, the future part, um, was probably changed to P D D with some fifty-foot lots and a mixture of lots in it for the reason that the R S zoning was too restrictive on the lot size, and you're really limiting your buyer pool when you go into there. And, and additionally, what we see from a lot of buyers is that a lot of buyers these days don't want a really large yard. They want the common areas that are maintained by the H O A. They want the shared pool. They want that so that they have it when they want it, but they don't have the day-to-day obligation to take care of their yard and spend all weekend mowing the grass and, and doing, doing a lot of those things. And, and just people's daily life these days takes so much time of, when they get home, they wanna enjoy it. They wanna enjoy, they wanna have enough space like we're gonna provide to be able to barbecue in their backyard and hang out, have a dog, have all that kinda thing. But they don't wanna spend all weekend taking care of the yard.
No, I totally understand that. Um, um, I loved your concept. I think you described it very well. But what are all the options, housing options that a residential suburban can offer versus a general suburban? I mean.
This is, this is, the request is for a general suburban, and you're talking about restricted?
Okay, no, yes, restrictions on some of the housing for general suburban.
What are all the restrictions?
Yeah, what are, what are the, what are the, what I'm basically trying to get at is there's probably some housing that general suburban would allow you to build, even though you're not gonna build them, but just that zoning would allow you to build some housing that maybe would not be what the community wanted in that area. I mean, is that a concern? I know you presented where you're not gonna do those, mobile homes maybe be one of them. Is that a possibility?
Mobile homes are not a possibility.
But I'm, but I'm saying, but in general suburban, that is one of the homes that is listed as general suburban. Is that correct?
Maybe the question's for the staff.
Yeah, I don't, but I'm not sure.
Robin Scott.
I'm sorry.
So for a general suburban zoning district, the, uh, product type that is allowed is a detached single-family home. A manufactured home is not allowed within the general suburban zoning district.
Thank you. What was the, one last question. What was the concern of the P N Z committee when you presented this to them? What was their concern about denying this request?
Uh, I, I believe that they asked a question of what is the minimum lot size that's allowable in R S zoning? And the answer to that question, I think, was six thousand square feet, which is technically a true, true and correct answer. But the additional facts that it left out were what I mentioned earlier of the average has to be ten thousand square feet. And so if we do a six thousand square foot lot, we have to do a fourteen thousand square foot lot to offset it, which significantly drives up, you know, the cost of the land and, and the cost of the house subsequently.
Thank you. I'll wait for.
Okay. Uh, uh, Mr. Schaefer has a question?
Yeah, just so, to, um, to dig a little bit deeper into the restricted suburban. I appreciate what you said about a lot of people would like to have, you know, smaller yards and, and more, um, maybe common spaces, parks, as we sometimes think about them. And there is an option two, which is cluster development, which reduces that lot size to an average minimum of eight thousand and a sixty-five hundred minimum, absolute minimum. Have you all looked or thought about that?
Um, I still think on an average basis, that's still, you know, as the goal of the, um, study that College Station did, we're trying to get houses down, um, you know, to an affordable, uh, level here. And, uh, as we're mentioning, I mean, already with what we're proposing, we're, we're gonna be getting to that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar starting point. If we go on a larger lot, there's no way we're gonna be able to meet that.
Right. But one of the other concerns, I think, that was brought up, um, by the Planning and Zoning Commission was sort of context, which, you know, and that, that is, uh, indicated in the, in the comprehensive plan too, and you, you alluded to that, and that's, so that's what I think we're hearing from some of the neighbors, is this idea of context and how you all blend. And the cluster development might be an option to blend a little bit better, although I appreciate what you all have gone through. So, thanks.
Other questions for the applicant? Uh, Mr. Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Um, we're considering a rezoning request tonight, and, and you've shown some alternative layouts that you propose in response to inputs you've gotten from the surrounding residents. Okay, does the rezoning, uh, commit you, the applicant, to any particular layout? Is that, is, is?
This is.
Approval of the rezoning, does that stick this layout onto that property?
So I, I believe we can, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we can request the rezoning approval with the stipulation that we do this fifty, we agree to do this fifty-foot linear park along the border of the Greens Prairie Reserve and, um, Sweetwater. And, uh, with a, a couple of those other stipulations I had mentioned of, um, four sides masonry for any of the houses that back up to those two neighborhoods. I believe we can add those stipulations. Is that correct?
So, so I'm gonna lead off while other people are thinking about this. There are, there are physical stipulations you can make for things like the green belt. I don't know that you can do anything related to the masonry or those, some of those types of things.
Yeah, so you can, you can do a condition, Anthony Armstrong, planning and development services director, you can do a condition that's something physical to the land, um, something like, yeah, you could say there needs to be a fifty-foot strip around X. You can give limitations to that to some degree, but it would be something related to what is a zoning requirement in the U D O. So you, you could do a number of different things with that. In Texas, we actually can't regulate building materials, so that wouldn't be an option. But, um, you, you could do something like the buffer. Now, this exact layout, um, verbatim, you would not be able to condition that. But you could condition the aspects of it that you're trying to preserve. You could even, going back to the other option that was, that was thrown up here, you could condition that areas be zoned to R S, for instance, as was shown. You could do that, 'cause that would be a upzoning to the request, so that would be permissible as well. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Good, yeah, while you're there, uh, this is gonna be a question for staff as well. He talked about his offer, the applicant's offer of Plan A, Plan B, to, to address some of the concerns of neighbors. One, I think it was Plan A, actually specified that certain, uh, detached single-family homes would be laid out like this map shows, and he indicated it would be restricted suburban. Well, that's not the application. The application clearly states it's general suburban. I don't know that we can do that.
So you actually can. Um, so the way that it works, when we advertise for a zoning request, if a zoning is less restrict, or trying to make that, do that word right. So, right, so G S would be a more dense product. If you went to a lesser dense product with R S, that would be allowable because of what we advertised as. We advertised as G S, which is the, which is more intense zoning district, you could go down. So same thing, had we advertised for a general commercial property, you could have zoned it to suburban commercial at that same meeting without going back to the drawing board. And so this, that's what I was saying with the condition, you could condition, and this is helpful for, at least from a, a record standpoint. We could say that those, the area shown, whatever, and we would write that into the ordinance that eventually, the mayor, you would sign. We would have an ordinance and exhibit. They'd have to go back, do some work, draw it up, but it would be pretty clear enough that we could, we could do that.
So, because that is a, uh, okay. So that could be a condition?
Correct.
Or what?
It would be a condition. Yeah, so it would be a, you'd be, you would recommend a, a motion for approval with the condition that they follow the R S designation as shown here, with the condition that they have the fifty-foot strip of landscape, that they have, whatever that is. If you start getting to that point, I can come back up here and help walk you through that. But, uh, you, it would be something that's a physical attribute, and we, we would walk through what that, that looks like.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to clarify whether we could even consider that.
You can.
Yeah, whether that was just a, we would like to do that, and it doesn't really tie him down. Okay, thank you for the.
Mayor, while Anthony's there, can I ask him a quick question?
Yeah, please.
Uh, the late Tony Jones, God rest his soul, his development at the corner of Bird Pond Estates and Rock Prairie Road, Waterford Heights.
Yep.
Was that a P D D?
It was not. Uh, it's a straight zoning. Um, they had come back with the P D D on the front side for a commercial section, but it was, um, the, excuse me, the original, uh, was a straight zoning. The back half, they did a P D D, um, for a small section, um, similar concept here. They could have accomplished it the same way as this is being proposed, um, but that back, that very back section was a P D D.
Our, our H O A, I personally worked with, uh, Tony too, but I couldn't remember how he effectuated, where it was adjacent to my neighborhood. That portion you're saying was a P D D?
Correct. The last block, basically, the, the surrounding last end, it was an addition. It was really Phase Two. Phase Two came in, and that was a, a P D D section.
Thank you, sir.
Which is, uh, the question is to why, um, why would you have not considered the P D D if in fact this was where you really wanted to make sure people understood where you were gonna put things?
We actually did.
More comfortable.
We actually did consider the P D D. And after working through that for a few months with staff, we kinda got to the position of what we're really requesting is G S anyway, and it would just be simpler to request the G S zoning. So, and, and the G S zoning is completely in line with the future land use plan, so we went forward with that route.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I, I think I will call, uh, Mr. Cornelius. Uh, the question came up as to the, uh, the, the consideration that planning and zoning, Mr. Cornelius is chairman of planning and zoning. Uh, they've given us their recommendation. Uh, uh, Mr. Cornelius, you wanna encapsulate that a little bit for us and answer any questions we might have?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Jason Cornelius, chairman, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. And as Mr. Cornelius said, we did hear this back in September. The commission's major concerns were over density and transportation. Uh, some of those concerns have been mentioned, uh, on the dais today, um, as far as, I don't, and Mr. Armstrong can help correct me on this. I know that we talked about the total number, but I don't know if that was presented as a cap as to how many, uh, units could be in the property. And then we also had questions about transportation and asking Mr. Schubert, where, what, if, where the T I A was considered, and it did not include the, uh, intersection of Greens Prairie and Arrington, so it did not go that far down, and so that added to some of our concerns, which caused us to vote it down.
Yeah, question, Mr. White?
Thank you. Um, did you, did the committee look at, or were they presented the two different options that we were shown tonight? Or was it just a pure?
It was the original, uh, presentation, and, uh, both of those, um, I guess, public meetings that the applicant had were after our meeting. So we did, we were not presented either option.
So the committee has not actually looked at these proposals?
The new proposals that were presented tonight, no, sir. They were not presented to the commission at the time. Again, those two, the public meetings that the applicant had were after our committee, after our commission meeting.
So density and traffic were the big issues that P and Z had based off this GS?
Yes, sir.
Basically, I understand that they were based on, on the five criteria item two, compatibility?
Yes, sir. Compatibility, and again, and I believe it was Councilman White that talked about the, after the zoning request, what would be allowed after that. And so that was a large concern of ours. If we did the rezoning as is, what would be, what would be able to stop the additional density?
Any other questions for Mr. Cornelius? Yes, Mr. Nancy?
Thank you, Mayor Nichols. Chairman Cornelius, your leadership on P and Z is not gone without notice. I want to thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, sir.
This was a split vote, is that right?
No, sir.
It was unanimous against? I watched the video. I didn't remember the exact vote count. Was it a hotly contested issue?
There was a lot of discussion, both from the public hearing and then amongst the commissioners ourselves, as to, a lot of questions to staff, a lot of questions to the applicant. We did ask the applicant, again, what, what was preventing, preventing the applicant from going with restricted suburban? And he basically gave the same answer he gave tonight, that they didn't think it would work based on what, what they were planning on doing. Again, our concern was if we grant you general suburban, what is going to stop the, the lot limits, especially hearing the concerns from the public that evening?
That was my next question. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I guess there are no other questions for Mr. Cornelius. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here and sharing your thoughts with us. Okay, I have a list of 23 names, I believe, who had signed up to speak, and I'm going to go with them as I have them on my list, so if you'll bear with me, we, and keep your comments to three minutes. I will say, if you heard other people, particularly as you get deeper into this, other people have said basically the same thing you're going to say on either side of the issue, whatever it is, then you just simply come up, indicate that, and don't use all three minutes of your time. We'll, we'll get through that. But with 23 people, and that's a good hour, over an hour probably. So I will start with Mr. Robert C. Todd, who will be followed by Perry Barbosa. Mr. Todd?
Robert Charles Todd, 16736 Wood Lake Drive.
Hold the microphone a little closer. There you go.
Robert Charles Todd, 16736 Wood Lake Drive. I point out that I live in the extraterritorial jurisdiction and in Brazos County. We adjoin the Sweetwater area a little further down on Wood Lake Drive. Our greatest concern is that, is really the impact of this overall change in density. The inadequate, frankly inadequate, transportation studies, which tend to ignore all the current construction going on, and some of the major intersections where the real bottlenecks will occur, was not adequately done, as admitted by staff. So that left us with that concern. The second is, the drainage studies get done later on. And unfortunately, everything kind of just dumps at the county line, where it moves into our lake that we try to keep in a decent aquatic condition. Increasing development around has led to marked decrease in the water quality and sedimentation that we, that we deal with. So, and then the final thing is, much has happened at the commission, at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Once a, what is the actual protection to the citizens, once a zoning has been made, that the number of houses presented in conceptual ideas and things is presented now, and while they're very well done, applaud their effort of reaching out to people. But once that is made, general suburban, the chance for a high density there, piling out onto the, onto our, onto Greens Prairie Road, and limited connections to other areas, as well as the drainage, makes me question, why not protect all the adjoining residences with something like the restricted suburban that would guarantee that at some point we didn't end up with too many homes in there? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Perry Barbosa, be followed by Lynn Krebs.
Good evening. I live in the Sweetwater area, and I'm mine, I've lived there for 10 years, and we have enjoyed the neighboring properties and, and the wildlife. And one of the things that we fully understood was that these properties with the increasing number of people in College Station would eventually be developed. So we knew this was coming. One of the things that we are concerned about is that the loss of safety and integrity to our properties with any of these developments. And so a very high-density development on the borders of Sweetwater has two big issues for us. One, as has already been mentioned, the issue of our use of roads. The connection to Whippawill will actually impair our ability to the roads. I walk, and my wife walk the roads every day for, without dogs. And so we are quite well aware of the community that we live in. Now, we know that that road, which has got no sidewalks and it's, it's drained by ditches, is pretty vulnerable to high-density traffic. In fact, when they were fixing or developing the median on Greens Prairie, a few trucks did some turnarounds in our front and pretty much ripped up the road. And that took about a couple of months to fix. So our road is vulnerable to high traffic. And so that needs to be addressed, whatever the zoning is in this area. If you connect it to our property, you will damage our roads, and you'll affect our use of those roads and the safety of that. So I ask you to consider that. Secondly, the, as the previous speaker mentioned, the drainage system is one, is a, is a concern. The, all the drainage, the surface water drains into a set of creeks that is at the southeast corner of Sweetwater. Those currently already flood and affect about five properties. So if the drainage is not properly done, then those properties become even more vulnerable. So I ask you to consider zoning at the lowest density possible, which is restricted suburban. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lynn Krebs will be followed by Neil Hogenson.
Good evening. Lynn Krebs, Pebble Creek, South College Station. I've prepared a few slides. I'll go through them quickly. Main thing I wanted to point out is just that the supply and demand of housing in this area is, we're undersupplied, and at almost every price level, particularly the median price level. Real quick point on, on the median price that was brought up earlier. Keep in mind that what pulls that down is older houses. If you look at houses under 300,000, for example, in this year, in this area, the median age is 20 years or more. So we're talking about new homes here, and so that price point is reasonable. Texas price distribution has shifted significantly since 2019 to the right, meaning higher-priced homes. The brown bars are 2019 price levels, and 2024 is in blue, and you can see that that's shifted greatly. Now, that's Texas. Brian College Station area, even with high interest rates, the median price has not come down, and this is just over the past three years. Housing affordability index across Texas is abysmal, and it's even worse in Brazos County. Brazos County's housing affordability is lower than the state's, you know, housing price index. So we have less affordable, and when I say affordable housing, I'm talking about all housing in general. I'm talking about supply and demand of homes at various price levels, particularly that. And believe it or not, interest rates are not the biggest reason for this. It's actually because of the next slide, which is the home price, well, the, this is the, that says home price index. This is, yeah, I think we got mixed up here on the slides. But what this is actually meant to represent is the, the price itself, the median price of homes in this area has skyrocketed, particularly since 2021. A big reason for that was extremely low interest rates in 2020 and 21, as you can imagine. Even though rates have been steady now for a couple of years, median home prices continue to decline, and that's mainly, in my opinion. And I should mention, obviously, I'm speaking as a private citizen, but I am a research economist at the Texas A&amp;M Real Estate Research Center, so this is something I look into all the time. And my biggest concern for our community is the lack of, of housing, and particularly housing, you know, like in that 350 to 500,000 dollar range, we have, don't have enough of that. And as you meant, as was mentioned earlier, this is the last tract, I believe, of this size to have, that could make a real impact. And kind of the point I want to make around this is, as Professor from American University once said, "The widespread distribution of private property ownership is the cornerstone of American liberty. Without it, neither our free enterprise system nor our republican form of government could endure long." It's so important to provide housing that new families, young families can afford. And just to put a point on that, the median age of first-time homebuyers in America is now 40 years old. And so we need to provide more housing, and I appreciate the concerns about density, but I think that there have to be, that has to obviously fit in the market. This is going to bring in a lot of property tax revenue that will address some of the issues in regards to roads and drainage and...
Thank you, sir. Neil Hogenson will be followed by Colleen Deeb.
Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm Neil Hogenson, 4035 Still Forest, Sweetwater. I wanted to just have some concerns about safety of the cut through to Whippawill, which was discussed previously. And I just want to say a couple of things about Whippawill as a street. It's about 30 years old. It's asphalt. It's about 30 feet wide. It's used by pedestrians, day and night, people walking their dog, riding their bicycles. I think a cut through through a subdivision with 30 homes or so, to a development with 800, would create a safety issue for all those people using it day and night, and there are no streetlights at night. And it's pitch black out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Colleen Deeb will be followed by Lloyd Davis. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Nice seeing you. Thank you guys so much for reaching out to me after, and talking to me, some of you, but definitely sending emails. I really appreciate it. My name's Colleen Deeb. I live in Greens Prairie. And myself, and then two other sets of neighbors, went around to Greens Prairie, and we canvassed the neighborhood. When we did that, we got to see, I want to say probably 90% of people face to face. There's not one person that said that they were for this. Not one. I don't know who these people are that are standing, but they don't live in this neighborhood. In fact, I bet they don't live in adjoining neighborhoods. Maybe, but I, we haven't met them. We got to see, we went to the whole neighborhood. So anyways, besides that, I want to talk about compatibility and comparability. And it's not comparable or compatible with our neighborhood. When we bought into Greens, Greens Prairie, we wanted to have, I'm going to actually just read this. We had, we wanted, our family decided that we wanted to have, be in this neighborhood. We wanted to live out the rest of our years. My husband and I are both over 65. We wanted to just live out our years in peace. And I understand that there's going to be development, but I'm hoping that you guys decide to vote for a neighborhood that is comparable and compatible to ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deeb. Lloyd Davis will be followed by Kartik Jha.
Lloyd Davis, speaking on behalf of the College Station Association of Neighborhoods. First of all, we believe that CSAN believes that homeownership's most effective foundation for family stability remains the single best way to build generational wealth, positively impacting future generations. And with that said, we strongly urge the council tonight to continue to work with residents in finding a compromise that allays the fears of nearby neighborhoods, yet still allows for a small but significant number of attainably priced homes to be built. Please note that CSAN is now using the term attainable homes and not affordable housing. Affordable is, to paraphrase, "in the wallet of the beholder." Housing is too close to warehousing. These are homes. They're for families. They're for members of the community who contribute daily to our well-being and who are friends, families, and neighbors. Attainable homes in College Station are critically scarce, impacting our city now and requiring dramatic progress to prevent future worsening of the issue. The disparity is compounded by a low rate of owner-occupied homes, which stands at about 35%, with rentals making up the remaining 65%. Consequences of this issue include stagnant school growth, teachers not being able to live in our community. College Station has been, school district student population has been fairly stagnant over the last several years, and you can evidence that by the district's recent decision to allow students from other districts who've been, began attending classes here. We have workforce shortages. We hear that from A&amp;M. We hear that from the city. All of this is in large part due to our housing shortage. Workforce shortage hamper facility ability, the city's ability to bring in new employers, as evidenced by the ever-growing share of property tax revenue that falls upon residents. It erodes the quality of life. It inhibits our ability to retain even a reasonable proportion or portion of the thousands of very bright, young college graduates passed through our community by way of their earning A&amp;M's degrees each and every year. All indications are that while our population of older residents is increasing, our population of young, non-student, younger residents is decreasing. In private conversations with a subset of Planning and Zoning Committee, we believe that at least some members felt a compromise could be reached. We ask you to explore what those compromises might be, and we ask that you, our elected leaders, personally help steer this effort in hopes of finding a solution. We believe that if successful, the long-term benefits will lead to lasting results for our community and outweigh the hard work now. This is particularly true for first-time homebuyers looking to establish roots in our...
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Appreciate your being here. Mr. Kartik Jha, followed by Dolores Kimcheck Graham. Welcome.
Howdy, Mayor, and council members. My name is Kartik Jha, and I'm a resident in Greens Prairie Reserve in College Station. I wish to provide my comments against the proposed rezoning of the Windham Ranch Land Parcel to general suburban instead of restricted suburban for the following reasons. Reason one, economic concerns and tax burden. While new housing brings additional tax revenue, condensed housing generally produces less property tax per acre compared to the cost of infrastructure and services it demands. This development would primarily benefit the developer, while the community absorbs the cost and reduce property values and higher service demands. If the property becomes high-density housing, it is almost impossible for all the cars to exit to Greens Prairie Road during the rush hour. So we will have more cars cutting through to Diamondback via Oldham Oaks. That much traffic will make cycling or walking much more dangerous, which turns this traffic issue into a safety issue. Reason two, property values and neighborhood character. The scale and design of condensed housing is inconsistent with the existing character of nearby communities like Greens Prairie Reserve, Castle Gate, Sweetwater, Nantucket, and Indian Lakes, eroding the sense of place and cohesion that residents have invested in. Rezoning for high-density housing for up to eight homes per acre directly adjacent to established neighborhoods like Greens Prairie Reserve threatens to reduce property values and destabilize the housing market. No neighborhood in the area has anywhere near the level of housing density. Curved roads, abundant green space, nature preservation, larger lots, and walking trails are characteristics of the surrounding neighborhoods. A general suburban zoning will not be able to maintain the level of integrity that these surrounding neighborhoods currently have. Reason three, strain on infrastructure. Additional and disproportionate impervious services will contribute to stormwater runoff, flooding risks, and erosion problems. Expanding utility capacity, water, sewer, power, would require costly upgrades, which ultimately fall on the city and taxpayers without the tax benefits. Reason four, schools and public services. CSISD doesn't have any additional... Emergency services such as police, fire, and EMS will be further strained, potentially increasing response times and reducing effectiveness. In closing, it is remarkable, but not surprising, that the PNC Commission voted against the rezoning proposal unanimously. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration and action, which will impact the present and future of all residents, their kids, and families in and around our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dolores Kimcheck Graham, and then be followed by Nell Rubin.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak about an issue that's very important to me. I've lived in Greens Prairie Reserve for almost four years. My address is 4805 Pearl River Court, and I'm opposed to this rezoning to GS. The high-density model of eight units per acre is incompatible with my neighborhood, which is four units per acre with Nantucket, Sweetwater, and Castle Gate. This type of housing invites investors who create rentals that really are not maintained. I can drive through any neighborhood, and I can point out the rentals. I attended one of the public meetings hosted by D.R. Horton, and I was kind of surprised because it wasn't a meeting, didn't have an agenda or presentations. We just walked around and looked at posters, and we asked the D.R. Horton representative's questions. And this is from my notes from that meeting that I, meeting that I attended. The high-density model would result in four to five D.R. Horton homes backing up to one home in Greens Prairie Reserve. That's not compatibility. I asked about a buffer between Greens Prairie Reserve and the D.R. Horton homes, and one rep said twenty feet, another one said fifty feet, so you can see it's evolving. So what is the plan? I asked if D.R. Horton would preserve mature trees bordering the property, and they said they would replant trees in accordance with city standards, city codes. I asked why the traffic study did not include the intersection of Arrington and Greens Prairie Road, which is a bottleneck several times per day, and I was told that they didn't have to do a study at this time. It could be done after the GS zoning was approved, and that's backwards. Traffic's a major concern. My home backs up to Oldham Oaks, Oldham Oaks, and I can tell you, you should rename it Raceway. Every morning when I'm walking my dog, I watch schoolchildren trying to cross that road to get to their school bus stop, and these trucks just whiz by, and that's going to get worse if you open that road into high-density housing. And I've, and I've talked with members of council and the zoning commission one-on-one, and I moved here because housing was affordable. I'm retired. My next-door neighbors, a young family that used to live in Austin, happened to be driving through College Station looking for a place to move, they could work anywhere, and they chose College Station because the housing was affordable. A recent study by Forbes named College Station on the list of best places to retire. They cited, quote, "Proud home of Texas A&amp;M University. Median home price, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, fourteen percent below the national median. Cost of living, thirteen percent below the national average. And if you ask me, our local builders have done a good job building affordable housing, and they care about their reputation in the community because..."
Thank you very much. Next will be Nell Rubin, followed by Miriam Saleh. Nell Rubin, and then Miriam Saleh.
Good evening, Nell Rubin. I live in the Woodlake subdivision, and I'm also here to speak against this proposal because of density and traffic, and also because we have experienced, as Charlie Todd mentioned earlier, severe water issues, flooding problems from neighboring development to the, to the extent that our, our lake recently developed blue-green algae for the first time because of, partly, I think, because of the runoff from neighboring construction projects. But mostly, I love living in South College Station, even though we're not officially part of the incorporated, we're not incorporated. But I love living there, partly because of the beautiful green spaces, because of, somebody mentioned the wildlife, because, you know, you can breathe, because it's not high-density. That's one of the reasons we moved there. And to have another high-density development in the area, as others have mentioned, I think would really stress the, the resources that we have down there, including the, the roads, which we're just, just worked on, and, and the flood plain, or the flood resilience. So I hope you will also consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miriam Saleh, and Nancy Dickey will follow that, follow her. Miriam? Hmm, not online, I guess. All right, we'll come back. Nancy Dickey is next, will be followed by Matthew Glover.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Nancy Dickey, and I live at 4040 Sweetwater in South College Station. I appreciate the time and the commitment it takes you to provide governance and for listening to each of us on this. I too would request that you not allow the general suburban zoning, but restricted suburban zoning for a number of reasons, and I'll try to be quick because you've heard most of them. First and foremost is one of safety. We live in Sweetwater, and a planned egress of several possible, several hundred possible homes into a cul-de-sac in our very small neighborhood on narrow streets, unlit, no sidewalks, would be dangerous for the people who live there, for the children who are bicycling and playing along that area, and would, in fact, very quickly destroy the integrity of that road. It simply wasn't built for that kind of heavy traffic. We also happen to empty out onto Greens Prairie in the very short segment that hasn't been changed to four-lane. That can become quite a bottleneck until and unless they get that fixed. I'm concerned about the drainage issues that you've heard. And then finally, I think we have to continue to talk about compatibility. The proposal is simply not consistent with the homes that are surrounding it in virtually every direction. Now, you heard from the developers that, that they would do their best, but I have to say that if we give them general suburban zoning, then we really have no guarantees. We have promises about what they say they'll do, but they are free under that zoning to do a variety of things, most of which are not consistent with the neighborhood in which they want to build. For all of those reasons and the others that you'll hear this evening, I hope you'll restrict that to restricted suburban. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickey, Dr. Dickey. Matthew Glover, be followed by Michael Bear. Matthew Glover. Oh, there he comes. There we go.
I just wanted to speak on the builder that's coming to try to build these homes. They're great. Local home builder. I've done work for these guys for twelve years, and, you know, I own a local plumbing company, Slim Plumbing, and we actually employ fifty local guys that all do their work, and they really keep us employed, keep us going, and have always been a great local partnership. All the guys are either local, former Aggies, or both, and, and they definitely have College Station's best interest in their minds in trying to build this town and, and keep it going. And I know that we do have a lack of homes in that three hundred to six hundred thousand dollar range. And so, yeah, I appreciate y'all, and thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Do you have your address? I think, City Secretary, just repeat it for the record.
Yeah, 4004 Warwick.
In College Station?
Bryan, Texas.
Bryan, Texas, okay. Michael Bear, followed by Susan McNeely.
Good evening. My name is Michael Bear, and I'm, I live in Greens Prairie Reserve at 4822 Pearl River Court. You know, I think you've heard it said that it's always a good real estate investment to buy the smallest, cheapest house in the, in the neighborhood, simply because the surrounding properties tend to elevate the, the value of the one you purchased. I think the same is true for subdivisions. And the homeowners, developers, and builders have already invested in these surrounding subdivisions, including Greens Prairie, based on the plans that the city council has already approved, being that area, and Wyndham Ranch being restricted suburban. And now, if that's changed, I'm sure D.R. Horton and Wyndham would get a pretty sweet deal. But it would come at the expense of, I think, of a negative impact to the property values in the surrounding subdivisions. So for that reason, I hope that we don't change now, midstream, after we've made all of these investments in these surrounding subdivisions. I just don't think it would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Susan McNeely. Susan? Ah, there we go. Sorry. Be followed by Michael Wilts.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members, for allowing me to, to address you tonight. I am, I'm thoughtful of the time that's spent by each of you in your agendas. I served on a local school board for over ten years, and, and know that that can be, can be a big demand on your time. I have, I agree with many of the things that have been said today, and certainly feel that my concerns have to do with that. I live at 4015 Sweetwater Drive in College Station. We are in the Sweetwater subdivision. This property obviously would butt right up to our property. As a personal note, twenty years ago, we decided that that was the place that we would live and retire, after scrimping and saving with five children and sixteen grandchildren for a place that we could call home, with trees, and, in fact, out of our, out of our home, you cannot see another house, because we have woods all the way around. I'm very, very concerned about the traffic that's been expressed tonight, and the safety. At least a thousand schoolchildren traverse Greens Prairie Road every day with their parents to go to elementary school, intermediate school, and I'm very, very concerned about the safety of the smallest of our people, since I served on a school board for a long time. I'm also very, very concerned about Whipper Will Drive. Whipper Will Drive and Sweetwater Drive are county roads. They are, they have no curbs, no lighting, culvert-ditch roadways, and they're made of inferior materials. They quickly degrade, and putting any kind of traffic through that Whipper Will cul-de-sac as the plan has, that's been shown to us, would greatly endanger anyone who would need to traverse, traverse that area. So I have fifty-eight seconds left, so what's my most important thing? I'm concerned about the integrity of a developer, and not because I have anything or knowledge about D.H. Horton. I know that there's, it's been said that there are suits, and other people have suits. This is, one of his suits has gone to district court, and it has to do with financial malfeasance. And I'm just very concerned about that. But even more so than that, I'm concerned that if we, instead of restricted suburban, we do general suburban, there's nothing to hold him to that. And we have had experience with that in the past, where things have gone to changed zoning or changed to our own property. I would ask that if, if you are considering the general suburban, that the things that he has discussed tonight, that he has told us could absolutely happen, I would suggest that you refer it to...
Michael Wilts, be followed by Gina Atty. Atty. Mr. Wilts.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My name is Michael Wilts. My home is located on Pearl River Court in Greens Prairie Reserve subdivision. I retired from a company after about thirty-three years designing electric facilities for subdivisions and commercial sites. I was required to go to site plan meetings as part of my job duties. My former company's mission statement was, "Safety starts with me." What that meant was, whatever project I was responsible for designing had to be safe and reliable. This led to my thought concerning design functions within Greens Prairie Reserve. I did not understand the narrowness of the main streets of Diamondback Drive until recent meetings regarding rezoning concerns. Our developer explained to us the streets were purposely designed in a narrow manner to accommodate low and moderate traffic. If this zoning, rezoning allows high-density development near Greens Prairie Reserve, this will affect the safety of our community and streets, given the capacity for low and moderate traffic. In conclusion, you have the ability to keep our, our streets and community safe by voting against this proposal. Please remember, safety starts with me, and safety starts with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gina Atty, be followed by Austin Pittman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for allowing us to speak. I'm Jenna Atty. I live in, in Greens Prairie Reserve at 4915 Pearl River Court. I don't have a lot to add, but I would like to reiterate the reason that we are all so concerned about safety. My motivation for standing here are my two little girls that will be going to Greens Prairie Elementary School, and some of our, my neighbors have described some of their concerns, and we love to walk around this neighborhood, and they are sometimes feral. And I am highly concerned about one of them in particular running out in traffic, despite me trying very hard to keep her near me. And I'm one of many families who live there, who I think, as you increase the amount of density and you increase this traffic, these have consequences that could be, and I'm not trying to be dramatic, but these have catastrophic consequences if there aren't a reasonable outlet for these vehicles to go. And there is an elementary school in that area, right where this high-density housing is supposed to go, that hasn't given, been given a lot of attention, in addition to several other schools, and, and there's inadequate planning for roads right now. That, that full assessment hasn't been made, and it will back up into these neighborhoods where these small children, and these dogs, and these people of all ages are trying to be outside and be with their families. And I, I recognize the need for additional houses here, but it can't come at the expense of the people who already live here. And I would encourage you, as others have said, to consider what this rezoning to high-density housing could mean. And I know another member of our community came up here in support of the person who made this request, and I would like to remind people that this person, the company that's made this request, doesn't have a flawless record, and those lawsuits are plentiful, and they don't exactly, if you just do a quick Google search, honesty is not something that comes really high on that search bar. And so I would be, giving something unrestricted is extremely nerve-wracking to those of us who live in these communities that are immediately adjacent. So thank you so much for your time, and I will apologize to my daughters for missing their bedtime, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Austin Pittman. Austin... Austin Pittman, Austin Pittman, be followed by Thomas Walker.
Thank you, Council, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity. My name's Austin Pittman. I live at 2333 Storyteller Court in Greens Prairie Reserve. There are just a couple of points I would like to touch on in response to both the applicant and what other residents have said. My, I was, me and my wonderful wife, along with several of our neighbors, were the ones who arranged and were encouraged by a member of council to make a committee to gauge the feedback of our community and see what people wanted. And we, we took that advice wholeheartedly, and we went around and we went to over two-hundred homes, as was mentioned by a previous resident. Not one of these residents, despite the show of people standing in support of this rezoning. Nobody wants, wants this rezoning, and everybody has major concerns about this rezoning. I would also like to touch on the point about the 3.75 homes per acre that the developer had alluded to, saying that that, the eight-hundred-and-eighty cap, that they would, it would come out to 3.75 per acre. My question, which was also proposed at the rezoning meeting, is why not restricted suburban? This is clearly under the four homes per acre. You guys asked the developer himself, "Why not restricted suburban?" There wasn't much of a straight answer, but there was a straight answer given at the meeting with D.R. Horton, which is that they cannot profitably do what they want to do in restricted suburban. For me, as a resident and a tax-paying citizen here, that's simply not a good enough answer to say that a developer can't make a profit, therefore, we're just going to allow general suburban and what they would like to do, to do. I would also like to touch that our personal developer for Greens Prairie Reserve went around during the staging, like, the planning process, reached out to Sweetwater and Nantucket, these surrounding communities, and asked for feedback, and chose restricted suburban despite its lower probable profitability. This developer said that they were invested in this community. I would argue that if the Planning and Zoning Committee thinks this is a bad idea, your feedback that you received from all of the residents in the area think this is a bad idea, and yet you still find yourself saying, "We want to do general suburban for our profit margin," I find that that is not investing in the community at all. I would also like to point out one other thing, that I, one of the comparable subdivisions was Brewster Point that was listed, as far as density. I used to live in Brewster Point, prior to moving to Greens Prairie Reserve, and I will say that a lot, almost all of my neighbors were student housing. They were properties that were bought because they were affordable and rented out to students, and it's my concern that that will happen with this area as well. And as the last person who stood up here said, I would also like to ask, is this fair for the residents that are in this area, who have invested their time, that put down their roots, to say to them, "We will allow someone else to come in with a non-compatible proposal and attach it to your neighborhood at your expense and have you fight the traffic you-"
Thank you very much, sir. Thomas Walker, be followed by Rebecca Boenig.
Good evening. Thanks for this opportunity. Name's Tom Walker. Live at, and I just moved there, 4915 Dandelion Court.
Just moved there.
In Greens Prairie Reserve, wouldn't you know. And I've been a resident of this area for College Station for twenty years, so I've seen all this growth. Everybody before me actually stole my script, so I'm not going to bore you with that, and they, they did it better than I could have. I do want to touch on a few things. I do not believe that we should go forward with this project the way it's defined, for all the reasons everybody said, density and yada, yada, yada. But I want to, I want to talk on some, talk or touch on some things that I don't think have really been stressed. The first is, my perspective is, this is a low tax base endeavor, relative to Greens Prairie Reserve. And some of the other properties that might be built in that area were not for this community, because I think this community will depress property values, it will disincentivize builders of more pricey homes, let me say, and homes that have higher tax bases. I think this community will use more city resources than it will pay for in its taxes. That will generate a tax deficit for citizens like myself. And that's really important, because I'm seventy-eight years old. Now, I'm here to talk about senior citizens. As you know, over the twenty years that I've been here, they have been a driving force of the growth. A lot of Aggies come home. They're going to spend their last years here. What this portends for Aggies, and I'm sorry, I'm not an Aggie. I'm a Buckeye. My wife's an Aggie. So, what it portends are two really devastating things for senior citizens, in my view. Some, and may, maybe even many. The first is dependency of devaluation of what is likely their most important valuable asset. Think carefully about that, because the dominoes could fall based on what you do here in the next days or so, or maybe even tonight, I don't know. But there are three plots of land, and you've got to understand in your mind whether those are going to be developed like the communities that are there now, that provide a strong tax basis.
I think you made your point. Thank you. Thank you. We get, we get the points you've been making. Thank you. Rebecca, and then Heather Huntley will follow, Ms. Boenig.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Boenig, and I also live in Sweetwater at 4104 Lakeland. I have lived in Sweetwater for twenty-four years. I think you've heard most of the concerns that we have in Sweetwater because of the fact that we don't have sidewalks, we don't have streetlights. The street is our sidewalk. We would like to ask if you do go forward with this. We were told that the only reason that you would need to connect into Whipper Will is for exit in case there was an emergency in this new subdivision. So, we would like to know if we could put a gate up that you could open during an emergency, but it would stay closed if we didn't need, because we don't need all that traffic coming through our neighborhood. They say that they're going to have four homes per acre, and that is their average. So, if you look at the plan, there are actually areas where they're planning on putting almost eight homes per acre. So, you're talking about extremely high density. We already have a problem with traffic on Greens Prairie Road. I would think that because they only have one exit on Greens Prairie, this is going to cause at least another traffic light to go up on Greens Prairie. It's hard enough to get out of Sweetwater as it is, because we exit onto a county road, because we are a county road. It's hard to turn left on Sweet, out of Sweetwater. It's going to be even more difficult once you have another sixteen-hundred cars coming out of this neighborhood. If these homes are sold to investors, you don't have enough, some of these garages are one-car garage, one-and-a-half-car garages, very little driveway, you're going to have more cars in the street, and again, more cars pouring out into our neighborhoods. One of the things that, yesterday, the mayor was on WTAW, and Scott DeLucia asked about the fact that what was going to happen, because these homes are not going to hold their value, and is this something that you want as a legacy in College Station, to have a whole neighborhood that does not hold its value? The question was not answered, and it was just then talked about the fact that we need lower-priced housing, but no issue about the fact that these homes will not hold their value. This builder has hundreds of lawsuits, including multiple class-action lawsuits, against them because of the fact that they get you into a price, they tell you your home is going to cost $2,100 a month, and then two months later, they say, "Oh, by the way, here's your taxes. Your tax is out another hundred, another $1,000." If you're budgeting for a $2,000 mortgage, you can't afford a $3,000 mortgage. Do we really want to expose the constituents of this neighborhood, of this community, to a builder that has these kind of practices and these kind of lawsuits? And it's not just a few, Mayor. It's hundreds of lawsuits. Every state that they build in, they are being sued for bad quality and for defrauding their clients with these scams about what your costs are truly going to be.
Your time is about up, Ms. Boenig.
Okay.
Well, we're, the three minutes are up. Thank you. Ms. Huntley, Heather Huntley, be followed by Valen Cepak.
My name is Heather Huntley. I live in the Greens Prairie Reserve neighborhood as well, and I'm also against the proposed Wyndham Track rezoning. Again, most of my points have already been mentioned, so I just want to say a few points that I haven't really heard that much. Again, the neighborhood compatibility is obviously an issue for us. I'm not going to beat a dead horse at this point, although I do think that the small lot sizes, I appreciate the ideas of adding to the buffer zones and those kinds of things, but it really doesn't fix the main concern that I have about compatibility. Traffic has also been talked about a lot. One thing that I haven't heard too much about is Arrington Road. Greens Prairie Reserve goes out into Arrington Road, which is a small, two-lane road with no shoulders, as of right now. People walk and bike along it, and I am very concerned about safety there, as well as within our own neighborhood. Our neighborhood has been designed to encourage walking and biking and outdoor activity, and it doesn't just stay within our little neighborhood, we go out as well. And then, also with general, general infrastructure, I really do believe the zoning could negatively impact the water and sewer capacity. My understanding is that the existing utilities and drainage systems were designed and installed under the assumption that this tract, assumption that this tract would eventually be developed, but not at this level of density that is being proposed. So, that is concerning. I also hear from different folks that College Station ISD is stagnant in growth. As someone who has a child in the district at Pecan Trail Intermediate, I don't see that. I see very, I, I think that you guys are rezoning as it is, and class sizes are large there, so in this particular area of town, we don't see that, and I'm concerned about that impact as well. I'd like to say, I'm, I'm not against change. I'm a resident of a fairly new and still-developing neighborhood, and I appreciate that change can be a good thing. However, I don't believe that rezoning this location to a higher density is the right decision. I've emailed each of you already, and I appreciate your time today, and I appreciate the five of you that did respond to me. I'm confident that I, that you want to do what is best for College Station, and I respectfully request that you, our city representatives, act as a gatekeeper for responsible growth and for thoughtful zoning. Please agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and do not approve the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valen Cepak. Valen Cepak, be followed by Charlotte Gray.
While others have shared thoughts that are incredible and opinions on the views of the zoning into land to general suburban, I think what has not been mentioned, that there is a duty not to just look at the outcome of our decisions for the next couple, next couple years, but for our decisions for the next decade. A responsibility is to be had about protecting neighborhood integrity, and this council has taken that responsibility seriously, and many appreciate it. However, I want to add that all those neighborhoods had to be built at some point. To have the legacy and integrity that so many are passionate about is a great thing, but not if you're opposed from allowing others, from yourself, creating the neighborhood to protect. Midtown, while being new and fresh, is doing a great job on building community and building neighborhood integrity, and their area, over there and part of their world, is accomplishing great things. However, it had to be built as a neighborhood. Midtown, being situated between Pebble Creek, Bird Pond, and Emerald Forest, has not diminished or degraded the neighborhood integrity of either of those neighborhoods, but has brought great, multi-generational neighbors who enjoy the luxuries of the landscape. We sit and we complain about workforce housing and how we want to provide lower housing for our nurses, teachers, first responders, and young adults to have the opportunity to build generational wealth for themselves, while taking the first step to buying a home. However, to do that, we have to have homes being built. Anyone who was born in this country has the opportunity to chase the American dream, and part of that dream is working hard, building wealth, and buying your first home. This city has a housing action plan, and in that plan, it says, "The city council will work to support affordable housing, efforts through funding or other means of support and encourage an adequate supply of safe, decent, affordable, and sustainable housing in the city." This proposal meets the criteria that you set in the plan and you approved, and I encourage you to consider that when you're making your decision. We have to add to the housing supply. It has to be done, or we are going to fall behind much other cities growing outside of this area and lose young professionals who want to work and live here but can't afford to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cepak. Charlotte Gray. Charlotte Gray, followed by Hunter Goodman.
My name is Charlotte Gray. I have, I live in Greens Prairie Reserve and have lived there for two years. My address is 4911 Dandelion Court, so I'm in the Grove. I also lived in Nantucket for fifteen years. I'm against the rezoning of Wyndham Ranch for the traffic congestion impact that it will have on Arrington Road. I know everyone spoke about Greens Prairie is a nightmare. Well, Arrington Road is also, and these are my concerns. Someone mentioned it a little bit ago, but Arrington is a two-way street with a ditch on each side that usually has dead wildlife with vultures lined up, eating, that you have to dodge around. Deer don't just die on the side of the road, they get hit by an automobile. Second, there are school buses that stop on Arrington to load and unload children. Three, I'm concerned for the joggers and the bicycle riders that ride and run on the shoulder. I've actually witnessed, in my profession, a bicycle rider killed in College Station in these same conditions. I pray every day that I drive to HEB that someone doesn't get killed. I purchased my home in GPR for the beautiful amenities and for the peace in wildlife. The result for your vote will threaten that. I'm asking you to vote your conscience and to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Goodman, do you speak?
Hunter Goodman, 1011 Lyceum Court. Couple things I'll say. I had my team look at the last two years of P&amp;Z meetings. In that time, there were thirty meetings consisting of multiple items. In all of those discussions, there was only one item related to zoning that was unanimously voted to deny, and it was this project. That should be telling to all of you. Secondarily, when you look at the history of these two tracks, they've been lumped together in the comp plan forever. If you go all the way back to 2013, they were both designated as estate from a land-use perspective. In 2013, those were both changed to restricted suburban from a land-use perspective, and in 2020, the city decided to simplify their designations on land use, and in doing that, they created two different zoning districts, suburban residential and estate residential. In each of those, they added zoning districts, so they renamed the land uses so they didn't match the zoning. When they did that, they added this other zoning district. My point in that whole message is, for about twenty years, these two tracks and their desired intent were exactly the same, and at one point, they were on the comp plan as a land use of restricted suburban, which matched the restricted suburban zoning. The other comment that was asked earlier is, "Why no PDD?" And I was actually approached by multiple developers from outside and consultants that asked me, "Man, it's odd they're going to straight zoning. Here's why they're going to straight zoning. It's simple, and not one thing that they promised up here can, you can hold accountable." In our- In our subdivision, we have HOAs. In those HOAs, we restrict, no short-term rental is allowed, and because we did it up front, we also do not more add, we do not allow more than two unrelated. Do you know who the largest developer of build or rent communities are in this entire U.S.? DHI, a subsidiary owned by this applicant. They, you have no way of restricting them, if you approve straight zoning, from turning this into a build or rent community. Not only is that possible, I would argue it's probably plausible. And it's one of the most egregious acts, in my opinion, when you look at the core fundamentals of compatibility and being harmonious. This is not harmonious to any of the adjacent subdivisions that exist today. So while I appreciate what Mr. Valen said earlier, I agree with him. We do need affordable homes. I just don't think it's right to do them right in the heart of the doughnut where everyone around you is not anything close to this level of density. It's completely inappropriate. It was found that way by your P&amp;Z, and they are the most unpolitical body. Rarely do they get calls, rarely do they get people that show up. It is an apolitical group. And the last thing I want to say, I've got 17 seconds. I did a PDD. There's at least one council member that sat on that board. What they did not tell you is you have to have a base zoning district. My base zoning district remained, and do you know how many of my lots from the, from the original preliminary plan I submitted?
Ms. Macyus, would you like to come back to the podium, please? Because that, that is the people that wish to speak, and we need to move to council discussion, but I want a little guidance. Do you have the zoning criteria that you put up there on the screen or not?
I do not.
You do not, but they are five?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That most everybody here has been on planning and zoning, so I hope you remember that.
Tim Bob, is there a way to get the criteria up?
Somebody's got, somebody's got the criteria somewhere.
They, they are in the packet on page 652. I know that's not up on the screen.
Yeah, that's true. They're, they're already in the packet. So if you don't have it open, but that's really what planning and zoning had to consider, and that's what we have to consider. I will open the...
I have a question for Ms.
You're, you okay?
Yeah, I just have one question.
You have, you have a question for staff?
You said 652.
Yeah, I have a question for Rob. One of the things that I found interesting is, I'm the immediate past chair of Planning and Zoning Commission, is that I find it very interesting that something can be presented to Planning and Zoning Commission, and then fundamental changes can be made between the time that it is presented to P&amp;Z and then when it comes to council. And what backstop do we have to make sure that we have an accurate recommendation from P&amp;Z? And that's in any case, I, I think they made a great decision in this case, but they aren't privy to the information that we got tonight. So that's one question. Do we have any obligation to take something back to P&amp;Z?
I can let Adam speak to that if he would like. But, I mean, go ahead. Sorry. The answer is no, there's not an obligation to take it back to P&amp;Z. The information that staff presented to you tonight was the same information that was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission. What did change was the applicant's.
Okay.
And the applicant's proposal, and that was due to after, that was due to the responses that they heard at their public meetings.
So has the application to the city been modified, or only the presentation that was made?
The application has not been modified.
Okay. So I think that's an important point. That, those are my questions. I'll have more later, I'm sure.
Let, let me just add another process question. If we deny this, there's a certain number of months or days that they have to, they can't come back until after a certain number of days. What is that?
180 days unless there is a significant change to the application.
Okay, so they could come back with a, a different application that might have a PDD in it, for example, just to, or a different zoning district.
That is.
Within the 180 days, if it was different.
That is correct. They could come in with a different request. The reasoning why we did not move forward with the PDD zoning district as they originally, as you heard they originally came in with, is that with a PDD zoning district, the city is looking, the city does not allow PDDs that do not change the original zoning district. So this request is something that can be accomplished using a straight general zone, general suburban zoning district, and they also have to provide a community benefit with a PDD zoning district as well.
Which they felt didn't fit their business model. They decided they didn't want to pursue it, is what I heard applicants say.
As city staff, we did not take forward a PDD request as the general suburban zoning district accomplished what they would like.
Okay, I understand that, but, but it was their decision not to pursue whatever aspects of PDD they wanted. Am I, maybe I missed it?
It was mutual. I would say it was, it was a direction from staff when they came forward, like Robin said, with the PDD. Again, you have to, you need to be doing something innovative and different, so you're looking to make some subs, some subsidies somewhere, some modifications, and you provide and offset that with a benefit. If you can accomplish something through the use of a straight zoning district, so Castlegate Two is a great example, it's no different than what could come here, that is a straight zoning district. When you do a PDD, you're trying to do something that is very different, and that's where you go into these additional modifications, et cetera. If you can be accomplished via a normal zoning district, we, we aren't going to recommend you go through this other process and support. And so I would say it was a mutual change. It wasn't necessarily one person or the other, but that was a conversation between staff and, and the applicant on what's the best way to present this application forward.
Okay, I'd see Mr. Wright with his finger up. He wants to ask a further question. Question for staff. We're just doing questions at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. You answered my question on PDD, because I was going to ask that. The other one was a lot of, a lot of questions about traffic, and I'm sure traffic impact analysis was done. I don't know if Jason needs to answer this. I think I pretty much understand why it didn't go all the way down to Arrington, because at some point, that's just further down from the development. But can, can you kind of speak to as why that might be and just kind of, and what kind of traffic analysis we have?
Yeah, so Jason gave you the nuts and bolts of it, but basically, it's, it's over a mile away from the intersection that was done, so we don't, we're looking at a mile radius of, of the area to be studied. In addition to that, there's a current ongoing project that the county is, is working on for that intersection, which will have substantial improvements, and they, they take into account all the development and the comp plan and things like that. Everything that the city is looking at from a density standpoint is based on a comprehensive plan. All of our infrastructure is sized in according to those assumptions, and so there, one, it was well outside the boundary of what would be typical for a TIA to be established, and two, beyond that, there's already an ongoing project in that vein.
Right, sorry, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a jump off, before we get to Jason, I'm gonna jump off something you said really quickly. Was the assumption that there would never be this quote-unquote dense?
No, so actually, when we, the comp plan looks at, and we changed it over to suburban residential, as, as Mr. Goodman mentioned, he's spot on, there were some changes that happened over time. When the comp plan changed, what, we kind of almost had this pseudo-pre-zoning of your tract with the comp plan. Back in the day, we had, you comp planted to RS to zone it to RS, and that's not how comp plan should work. So we, we broadened that out in 2021 with the update, with the 10-year update, the major overhaul of the comprehensive plan. We changed that, and when we did that, all of our models were also looked at and adjusted to account for that. So there's, there's averages that get done when we look at these, the comprehensive plan, and certainly with zoning, when we kind of nail that in. But all of, all these projects and all our thoroughfare plans, our master plans, take into account what the comp plan has to offer, and it's been that way. The comp plan's been in this designation since 2021, and so everything we have to date has been using those assumptions.
Does the comp plan assumed 800? Or some, some?
Yeah, so it assumes, it depends on the model you're looking at, but there's usually an average of anywhere from four to six, I would say, across this whole area. So we take the blanket area, we're probably assuming four to six in general for like a water demand. We, there's a worst case, and I can get really nuts and boltsy, so stop me, but there's a, there's a worst case, an average case, and then, and then kind of like the if nothing happened. And so we, we run different models at those cases, and essentially, we're looking at the middle. So if there was, in this case, four to eight would be your kind of worst case and best case, we're going to take a six usually, or you're, you're going to meet in the middle, and then you average that out, and as things come in over time, we can hone that in a little bit, a little bit further.
Mr. Smith?
Go ahead.
No? Oh, you, oh, you wanted Jason to speak? I'm sorry.
Good evening. Jason Schuber, Plan Development Services. So this application did have a traffic impact analysis submitted. In 2016, the city changed our ordinances where single-family developments of really any size wouldn't need to do so. It did study seven intersections. Five of those are on Greens Prairie Road. The ordinance, section 7.13 in the, in the UDO, gives some guidance on what's your study area. Generally, when you go beyond a mile, that's kind of like beyond what, I guess, the normal study scope is. And so specifically, the intersection of Greens Prairie Road and Arrington is more than a mile from this development, and so it went to, from Castlegate Drive down to Woodlake Drive in the five different intersections, three more in between there. The other part that Anthony had mentioned is that it's part of the county bond. Tax dot and the county are working together on a project on William B. Fitch. The Greens Prairie-Arrington intersection is literally hundreds of feet away from that. They actually operate, you can't change it without, you know, if you take everybody out, then they're just going to be backed up, you know, because Fitch is, is, is a impediment there. So they're actually connected together. Tax dot knows there needs to be improvements there, and so they're, they have been working on a concept, and those are connected. So ultimately, as well as beyond the study boundary, that, that intersection and that area is under study to be improved. And so it's not really the, I guess, the burden of this development to go do some major project when it's already been identified through, through Tax dot to do so.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
My question has to do again with process. Okay, the drainage, drainage seems to be one of the big, one of the issues that were raised, and I know that you look at, well, then at zoning, you're not looking at drainage.
Correct.
At some point in the development process, you look at drainage and detention and things like that, that, that would mitigate the potential impact downstream. When in the process is that considered and how is it done?
Yeah, so the, the first time we look at it is on a holistic scale at the preliminary plan, so that would be the next stage after this. We're basically looking for areas designated for detention ponds, any green space areas, floodplain areas, things like that. They have to do kind of a preliminary study of that, and then when we get into construction drawings, the, the final plat documents, we're nailing down, there's drainage reports, there's the BCS guidelines, so the city has joint standards with our city to the north, and there's a comprehensive list of guidelines, it's hundreds of pages long, on what everyone has to follow and meet in order to, to build in the city college station. And those, that's detention, that's sizes of pipes, roads, et cetera. All that gets looked at during the construction plan process before any dirt is moved on the ground.
Okay. Another question. Okay, several speakers have mentioned concerns with the, I don't know, the reputation or the, of the, of the developer, the builder. Can the city deny building permits or deny applications based on that reputational issue?
We cannot, and I, the attorneys are probably squirting in their chaise, but, but no, you cannot, we can't look at property owners. And again, Texas is a very big property rights state and as it is, but when an application comes to the city, it doesn't matter if you're mom and pop or you're the big corporate, we have to treat, we treat you the exact same. Everyone is, is equal when they, they submit an application for the city, and every hound has the same rights to develop their property in a different way.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Did staff have a conversation with the developer about going to RS? Where's there any discussion that that could possibly work for them? I know one of the people testified that it had financial implications. Did y'all have a discussion with them?
We had discussions more so after the fact of the P&amp;Z meeting, where there was a lot of that concern and kind of that idea of, of an RS change should come up. And, and again, there's, I think the, it's a flexibility issue is really what it comes down to, and the, the minimum, the 10,000, as was mentioned, so you have to average that out. Again, when we talk about four units an acre and eight units per acre, that's a purely mathematical calculation. It's not, it's not what you can achieve. It's, there's 43,000 and some change square feet in an acre. If I divide that by the minimum 5,000 square foot lot, that's eight. If I divide it by the minimum 10,000 square foot lot, that's four. But you won't hit that. You won't get that at all. Your GPR has, is RS base, it's got, the, the overall build-out will be, will be about 2.3 units an acre, give or take. When you look at Castlegate, Castlegate is a straight zoning, just like this could be to GS, they're right around 4.2 to 4.8, depending on the area, because again, that, that number isn't looked in a vacuum, it's the whole development. So you have to take out, if you have floodplain, you have parkland, you have whatever, that counts against you in that calculation. So if I've got 70 acres of floodplain in, in open space, that counts against what I can get in a density calculation. So you end up only seeing probably in that nature of, of four to five even being capable under GS. And so when you take that same kind of equation to RS, you're talking more so like Mr. Goodman's development, where he could do four units an acre too, but he'll tell you, just like any other developer, you can't achieve that. There's too much, there's too many other requirements that take away from that, just roads in general almost, that lowers you down from even four, you'd be getting three. So I think they wouldn't be able to achieve that same ultimate lot count under, under those RS conditions.
Councilman, just to clarify something from a process standpoint. So if someone comes to us, and Anthony can elaborate, and says, "There's a property on your, on your comp plan, your future land use, it's shown as, you know, GS or RS or whatever it is, and we'd like to zone it that way." We don't talk them one way or the other, right? Because it's in compliance with what essentially the council and the community at that point has said, this is what we want to develop there. So it would be different if somebody came, if they came and said, "We are looking at a zoning that's more dense," then that conversation might be different. But if someone with a property, whoever it is, comes and says, "I would basically like to rezone this to what the city says it wants," then we don't try to dissuade them or encourage them any other way.
Perfect, that's very helpful. Just to clarify, there's no floodplain in this, in this area?
Oh, there's a lot. There's not, there's, yeah, there's not FEMA identified.
Drainage, there's drainage.
Drainage.
Yeah, there's, there's no FEMA identified floodplain, but there is, there is creeks throughout here, and so part of development, we, we make you go through and, and establish what those 100-year floodplains are when we have unestablished areas or areas that haven't been studied. You have to go do that work for us, essentially. The developers out there, they do that work, and they, they essentially do the flood studying, and anything that's in that zone has to be, has to be sectioned off from lots.
I think I know the answer to this question, but just please verify it. So there's no way we could, because I, because I, I support the housing need, right? We do need the housing. There's no way to support this and, and do a, a amendment to the, to the motion to make it RS, because that would change the comp plan, and we cannot do that. Is that correct?
No, you can, you can do that. You, so, so the comp plan allows for GS or RS. They, if they come with an application for either one of those two districts, by the, by the nature of the comp plan, we, we have to bring that forward to you. That is a valid application to be made. But it can be either GS or RS per the comp plan. And so if you wanted to make an amendment that was the whole thing is RS, and, or if you wanted to make the parts of it were RS, that's totally within your purview. I would say that also, then if you wanted to change that district, you might ask the applicant first, and they could pull it or do whatever, because if, whatever you decide goes into law, right? So 10 days from now, whatever you say you can vote for, that would happen, and if they don't agree with that amendment, the application, that would probably be an issue. But you can certainly make whatever conditions or changes you would want to make to that.
But can I just clarify that? That would be a city-initiated rezoning then, if this body did it and they didn't ask for it?
So if you wanted to do it as a city, we'd have to come back, it's a whole different process. This is still the, the applicant's request, but if they were amenable to your condition and didn't want to pull the item, then.
I understand that, if they're amenable, yeah, that, that's a, a very difficult thing to decide at this point. Anyway.
We've got a long night. We can do it.
Go ahead.
So true.
To me, to me, it's still a city-initiated thing, because I don't think we could negotiate something sitting here with a developer.
I would be interested to know if the developer, not a long discussion, would the developer would be interested in zoning this as RS?
Well.
No, they?
I think we asked that before, but if he wants to come forward to make a comment, that.
Yes.
He explained why, why he didn't do that originally.
As we've discussed before, rezoning this whole property to RS is not going to be feasible to develop the whole property. We've proposed some compromises of some limited areas to RS, but from a feasibility standpoint, it just doesn't work. That being said, I do also, Mr. Jerry Wyndham, who owns the property and is also an applicant on this, would like to come up and say a few words as well, if y'all would allow him.
I would certainly allow him to say a few words if you'd like, yeah, because I have a question or two for him.
I would certainly allow him to say a few words if you'd like, yeah, because I have a question or two for him. Welcome, Mr. Wyndham.
Thank you. I kind of feel like the enemy.
Well, we're all up here together, is all I can say.
Well. This all began whenever me and my wife have almost reached the age of 85. And we were looking for, to do some land planning, estate planning, and, and disperse some of our property and to move on. We had no plans to do anything with our home place on Arrington Road. We still would have 300 or so acres there. I think the fact that I've never opposed or complained about anything the city or other developers have done and understand that things change as a community grows. The city designated my land for residential development under the future land use plan. The city designated that future thoroughfares go through my property with the thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan. The city approved all adjacent developments that had been submitted. And by approving those, the city has shown through their actions that this is not rural land anymore. My question is this. If this is a part of the city plan for this to be residential, and the city has approved developments all around in accordance with the plan, then why would they deny the longest living property owner in the area the same approvals? As I said before, I've never opposed anything on nearby developments and have seen changes over the years. But it has, has no negative change to my quality of life. But the increase in neighborhoods and traffic, along with the increased number of wild hogs on my place, makes it difficult to operate a horse ranch and cattle ranch on what used to be rural property. I guess I could turn it into hog lot or feedlot or a cattle feedlot, which I don't think the neighbors would like either. But I would just urge you to somehow allow us the same considerations that you have allowed to others. The developer has listened to a lot tonight, a lot of criticism. I don't know if he knew that's true. Some of it probably is. But I think the people that you're not hearing from are all the people who can afford, cannot afford to be in the type of developments most of these people are in. I think that they are the largest group. There's a bunch here. But I think they're the largest group that you're not hearing from. I appreciate, appreciate everything you do. I have not been real active in attending these meetings, mainly because of my age. I was one of the ones that developed Wood Lake and several other developments in the edge of College Station and in the brown city limits and brown, college, the, outside of the brown city limits. I think all these people are comfortable in their own homes and are not concerned with people outside of that area. It would be like me, I'm comfortable with my house in the middle of 300 acres. But I'm not going to demand that everybody, nobody else can come into that area. And that I, I want everybody to live in the middle of the 300 acres. Anyway, that's about all I have to say. I know that it's not a popular thing and, and maybe I will make it a feedlot. I don't know.
Thank you, sir. I do have a question that only you can answer, but you don't have to. It's puzzled me that you have reserved an area in, in the north section of this. Is there some plan in mind for that or do you just, is there something already there that you want to protect?
No, there's nothing there to protect. I just thought that with this development, it would be something that I could keep. And maybe it would be valuable at a later date for some other, you know, commercial or something. And, and it would be no worse than the same as the rest of it, if it, if that didn't work out. I didn't have any particular plans for it.
I see. I understand.
It was just available and I could do it and.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. No, I guess there's no questions here. We're going to have to debate the discussion and debate the issue and see how we can move it forward. Thank you very much for being here and appreciate your statement. Okay. You have another question for staff?
One more question for staff. So.
Question for staff, Robin?
Robin, can you walk me through, I know that we went through this planning effort to, over the last 10, 15 years that involved us consolidating a bunch of the old residential zoning districts. Do, can you tell me the history of this particular tract as it relates to the future land use plan? Sure. So like was mentioned previously, in the 2014 comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal report, it was recommended to evaluate the appropriateness of the existing future land use and character designations and recommend any necessary amendments and evaluate the location and amount of estate designated land on the city's future land use and character map with the intent of identifying areas that may support a higher density, single family housing. So as of 2014, estate was what, is that like a, that's an acre, right? An acre, acre minimum? Correct. And so at that time, it was changed to the restricted suburban. And then in the 2020 comprehensive plan update, the future land use map was updated to rename the categories and refine the definitions of the categories. Like Anthony mentioned earlier, previously, our comprehensive plan and our zoning districts kind of matched, kind of one for one. So you would have a restricted suburban, future land use designation and a restricted suburban zoning designation, which isn't an ideal future land use plan. So in 2020, we consolidated some, we renamed them to be what now you see as suburban residential. And in that suburban residential land use, there are two zoning districts that are appropriate, general suburban and restricted suburban. So the reason these, these changes were made in 2020 was to simplify the map and move away from the, using the zoning district names, but rather describe types of places and not specific uses or development densities. So instead of having restricted suburban and general suburban land uses, you now have a suburban residential. So one other planning question. Is it typical to see higher density developments closer to the middle of town or at the very edge of town? Higher density as in townhomes and multifamily, you would see in the urban designation. And so then in, as you get further out, you would see larger lots such as estate lots. Okay, and last question I have related to this. What process, I know that there's a big, first of all, this is all very complex. And I know that people that have been doing this for a very long time, it, it's still a lot to understand. You've got the comprehensive plan, the future land use plan, and it kind of all trickles down from there. When we updated the future land use plan, what was the process we went through? Because we took the future land use from a, you know, acre lot to, up to eight houses per acre. What was, what was the process that we went through where the neighborhoods notified? Or is that something that is done similar to a rezoning change? Or is it something that we as just council and staff can make that change and then it rolls out? So when we are going through changes like a major comprehensive plan update, we don't necessarily notify every single property owner, but it is a larger discussion. So we, for example, we have online surveys that people can take. We have multiple public engagement meetings. And we also meet with them on a one-on-one basis if they would like. Okay, so if there was a major shift in 2021 as to what that future land use could be versus what it had been prior to? Is that correct? In 2020, we, sorry, in the 2020 comprehensive plan update, we changed the land use designations. We renamed them. So then you, on this property, it was renamed to suburban residential, which would allow for general suburban or restricted suburban. I think 2020 was the year that we were all stuck at home too, so.
So from a history standpoint, when we first started as a state residential, council directed staff to go out, find areas, change it. We went out at that time, we did send out, there was a lot of notification. I mean, we had people that came and spoke it, council meetings, P and Zs, we have records of all that. At the time, comprehensive plan amendments weren't mailed for, back, back in that time period. Since then, we did the update in 2021. If you, if your property got a change, we did send a mailing to that property. So I think a lady mentioned earlier, who is in the E T J, that she got a letter that we changed their zoning. We actually didn't change their zoning, to your point, it's a complex process. We changed the comp plan. And so the comp plan for their, for the E T J properties also changed with that update. So anyone, including E T J residents, got a letter that's saying, hey, we're looking to amend this thing. And that's, that was part of, those were targeted outreaches to property owners. But the overall process is just a large engagement the city does, media outlets, news, et cetera, stakeholders, all that kind of stuff throughout that process. But certainly, I mean, especially with the last time, you know, people who moved in the G P R, for instance, moved in after we did that process. So from just a timeliness standpoint of how things developed, they, they probably missed that.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff? Because the next thing will be, will the council have a debate and we'll decide what we're going to do. But I've been sitting here for three hours or more. I need a five minute break, and I'm calling a five minute break. I apologize to the audience. I know you all want to hear the discussion, but I think we need to have a break to move around a bit. Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes. Thank you all for your patience. I will remind the council and others that there are a number of people in the audience waiting for five more public hearings. So this is only the first of several. So we've got other folks that would like to have their items considered today. So I will, however, we have an important item on the agenda. We've heard the applicant, we've heard the citizens, we've heard the landowner. I think we're prepared to have a discussion. Anybody want a discussion or you want? I'll recognize you, Mr.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to set the floor up for discussion, I suppose.
Whatever, if you can find a second, that's okay.
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning with the step down rural. Can you bring that up so I get it correctly and Anthony can walk me through it?
That's one of the two options.
Yep.
And one of them included
The restricted suburban.
Suburban in certain areas.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning with, how should I word this, Anthony? With the restricted suburban stipulation that abuts the adjacent neighborhoods as shown on this map.
Nailed it.
Awesome.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Wright and a second by Mr. Smith. You wish to speak to your motion?
Yeah, sure. Outside of a couple, I think, early on developments that were in the E T J and some other stuff, I will not likely ever vote against more housing. I mean, the amount of people that say that's the number one issue in this city, it's hard to look at more housing and say no to it. Especially when it fits within, I think, what's appropriate. I understand, I do understand where you're coming from, stuck between two neighborhoods, one rural, one that is sort of larger lot sizes. I think the accommodations that they're making are more than I would even request of them, so. But I, I think it's nice. I think they're making those accommodations. I think we lock them in on that. And as, as the city council body, I don't believe that, well, it's legally, we can't say anything else other than this is what it should be zoned as. I feel like all the emails I, I got and were sent and read, I feel like I tried to ask those questions that were really prominent and present in those. And I think that it's been addressed. To me, this is another neighborhood and more houses that we desperately need. And I feel, I feel good about that, so that is where I am.
Mr. Smith, you want to speak to your second?
Yes, I appreciate it, Mayor. You know, when, when you look at this map, if you did the, the rezoning with the density that's allowed, they're in reality, when you take out the roads, the drainage, the parks, you're never going to get that, a unit per, I mean, that just, it never works out that way. So it's, so that, that's not the density that will be there. And I believe that this compromise or this proposal was, appreciate the developer meeting with the adjacent communities and coming up with something that mitigates the concern. And, and I think that's what this does. What it also does is it basically tailors this rezoning to this development. They're not likely to just flip this land to someone else and have it, have it become, you know, a, a whole nother development. Because, because this is sort of a strategic rezoning that, that follows the pattern of the proposed development they've got. And so I, I think that, and, and again. And so I, I think that, and again, we need the housing inventory. We need the diversity of housing types. In my neighborhood, we have everything from small zero-lot line developments to large lots and everything in between. And it's very walkable and very pleasant, and it's a great neighborhood. And I think this one can be too. And it can be a great neighborhood among some existing great neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we consider the vote? Yes, sir, Mr. White.
So I, I agree with my colleagues. I, I think housing is a, is a major need in this city. However, I think integrity of our community plays a factor in this as well. And I think that I personally am taking that in consideration. When we talk about zoning, we're, all we have are numbers. It's my understanding that I learned tonight is that whatever drawing that we're looking at right now, there's absolutely no guarantee that that's what that area will look like.
Well, now wait a minute. He's, the motion is adopting that map.
That was not the motion.
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that we cannot.
And that, that's why I made the motion that way was that you're making a motion to include some of it as restricted suburban.
You can't adopt this map as it stands in totality. You could adopt the concepts of RS at the perimeter. So the, the red maroon color at the edges there, you can adopt that, that, that is staying, that's, that, that has to be at the perimeter of the subdivision. But all the interior of this would be.
This is not a site plan.
Correct. The, all, all the interior would be up to, some of it's subject to change. In totality, we talked about the floodplain, the parks, like Councilman Smith said, all that drainage area is going to stay more or less the same. But how all these things in the middle are laid out, that could shift around.
So, so to do the numbers based off, you know, square footage and homes and stuff, we don't know out of the 237 acres, what that RS, that maroon area, what area that would be calculated as that 237, right? So we don't know. I mean, we're just looking at a picture.
I can't tell you for certain what it is right now, but I can, it would be essentially a block in along the perimeters. And we would, we'd go back, if that's what was approved tonight, we'd get a survey from the applicant that shows the diff, that has that marked out per this exhibit, and we would get that, and that would be part of the ordinance. But it would, the, the RS showing on here would be the same. But ignore all the roads and all that, that would be a later date.
I guess where I'm coming from is, is I, I guess I'm confused when I, when they say they couldn't do the whole area RS, but they can come up with this area of RS. I, I'm really, as I mentioned, I believe my colleagues are right on. We need housing, we need affordable, attainable housing. I would, based off the motion, I would not be in support of the motion, but I would be in support of making this whole area RS. We've already discussed that.
Then you just vote against the motion. Very good. Any further comments? Anybody else have a comment they wish to make? Ms. McLeeheny, and then we'll, then Mr. Yancy.
So I think this does go to neighborhood integrity. I very much am pro-high-density where it's appropriate. The city has set up areas closer into town to encourage that density. This is a case of which of these is not like the other. We are called and tasked to look at the suitability of a, of a project as it relates, or the zoning as it relates to, to its surroundings. I am also just commenting on the motion as it stands with the RS on the perimeters. There were, there were a lot of different things that were brought up as, I will say concessions, the masonry, all of that. That is not something that we can hold anyone accountable, accountable to. That is not part of, the zoning's the zoning. That is all that's happening tonight. In order to get density, I think we need to do it where it makes sense, which is not on the very edge of town, in the middle of larger, larger tracts. It needs to be closer in where it makes sense, where the density's already occurring.
Go ahead, if you're not finished.
The, the other piece of this too is our Planning and Zoning Commission worked really hard and debated the merits of this fully. And we had a unanimous denial of this rezoning. And I know they haven't had the benefit of seeing this particular proposal. But I think we need to think long and hard about overturning a unanimous decision by our Planning and Zoning Commission. I think that sets a bad precedent.
Thank you, Ms. McLeeheny. Mr. Yancy?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody that showed up today. Everybody kept their cool and their temper in check. And I know the fear that you feel. I went through a very, very similar situation, engaged you guys. I see a lot of familiar faces out there. Tried to get y'all to work out the same kind of compromise I was blessed to be able to work out in my neighborhood, for whatever reason, that didn't work. But I think it's a fine constitutional republic we have. This is a representative position, and you guys have advocated on your, on behalf of yourself on both sides. No, no boogeyman in this thing at all. Mr. Wyndham, you're my hero, sir. I live on six acres and I get on my tractor as much as I can. I can't imagine the, trying to manage that size of attractive land over the lifetime that you have. I think this needs to be the right fit. I'm going to be a no tonight. I'm not a no to more housing. I'm not a no to higher-density housing. I'm a no to this zoning request. I think the way to make this puzzle piece fit is with a PDD where you guys come together and you talk it out, and maybe you can come to an accord. Maybe you can't. And like my esteemed colleague, it's a representative position. I have to trust the committees that are, that, that we appoint. I just don't know how we can go against a unanimous decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So guys, please bring it back as a PDD and see if you can work something out with the landowner. I think under a PDD, you guys could ensure that there would be, it would be a deed-restricted community and you wouldn't, it couldn't go to rental. And if you guys can't agree to that, well, then that kind of tells us something that we needed to know. We're looking for entry-level housing that families can buy and accumulate generational wealth for themselves, not more, not more rental housing. So thank you for your presentation and thank everybody for their level-headed approach and your quality feedback.
And Mr. Schaefer?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the way you put that, Bob. I, I appreciate that folks are out here. We've seen a lot of this this year, some of you know that. The folks have been very engaged, and that's a good thing. And I think both sides have stated case as well. I, I'm going to fall back on the same idea that the P&amp;Z thought about it carefully. I went back and watched their, watched their meeting thoroughly and tried to understand where they were coming from, and I think I did. And then the other thing I'm going to fall back on is, is the comprehensive plan in Chapter Three. And we have it right here in our packet. It indicates that new neighborhoods should be designed to fit with the existing fabric of the community. And I realize that can be taken different ways. But in this case, I'm going to say that it's the existing fabric of this adjacent community. And, and, and it is tough. You can tell it's tough. We're, we're, we're all up here talking about how we, I would certainly agree, we need housing. We need whatever affordable housing or attainable housing is. And when you're in a growing community like this, it's a tough, it's a tough deal to try to equate the kind of quality that some of you are expecting in larger lots with the need for smaller lots and things that are more affordable. And here we are, up against it, right here. But I, I think in this case, I'm going to come down on the side of, of wanting this to be something that's not quite as dense in the end.
Okay, so thank you. I think everybody has spoken. As I just, as I understand the motion, the motion is to approve a rezoning on this property that would have general suburban except for those areas that are indicated that would be classified as restricted suburban. Is that correct, Mr. Armstrong? Is that what you heard? Maybe I should ask, is that, is that your motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion second indicate all those in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Two, those opposed, raise your hand and I say aye. So the motion fails five to two. Mr. Attorney, where does that leave us? We have a failed motion. We could have other motions, or do you need another one?
No, a motion fails.
This motion fails, it was conditioned upon these specific items.
Right.
Okay, so that we're done?
Yes.
All right, that's it. As I said, we have five other public hearings tonight. So those that are only interested in 8.1 are welcome to leave, but we're going to 8.2, and we've still got some other items besides public hearing. While they're leaving, I'm going to read out loud the item 8.2, which is a public hearing, presentation, possible action regarding an ordinance amending, Appendix A, UDO, Article Four, Zoning District, Section 4.2, official zoning map of the Cota Ordinance City College Station, Texas, by changing the zoning district boundaries from GS, General Suburban, to MH, Middle Housing on approximately 0.5 acres, generally located at 1612 Park Place A and B. Mr. Seagrave?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Garrett Seagrave, Staff Planner, Planning and Development Services. This evening's request is to rezone the two-quarter-acre lots located at 1612 A and B Park Place, and they are currently developed as single-family homes. These properties' comprehensive future land use designation is mixed residential, which allows for a mix of moderate-density residential development that is appropriate for residential infill and redevelopment that allows original character to evolve. The request tonight is to rezone these properties from general suburban to MH, middle housing. Permitted uses for middle housing are duplex, single-family, and townhouse. After discussion and review, staff has determined that this request met the outlined rezoning criteria in the UDO. This was heard at the October 16 P&amp;Z Commission, where the commission unanimously approved or recommended approval six to zero. And I and the applicant are available for any questions.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
And what is the advantage of changing this to middle housing? From general suburban to, to put it in middle housing? Just, just quickly.
Yes, sir. From a planning standpoint, it follows the comprehensive plan.
Follows comprehensive plan, but it allows the owner to do different things?
Development types, yes, sir.
Okay, so they can put different kinds of housing, although it's only two lots.
Yes, sir. They can do the duplex, a single, keep it as single-family, which it is, or a townhouse.
And they could apply for shared housing category?
Shared housing is not currently defined and is not enforceable. That is something we are working on.
Okay, okay, very good. So you've heard the presentation. You got any questions?
I got a question, Mayor.
Question from Mr. Schaefer?
So Garrett, help me out here. If they, if this changes to middle housing, and obviously it probably won't redevelop right away, but if it does, will there be a sidewalk requirement?
I believe on the.
On the, on the, on just those lots? I realize it can't be.
Yes, sir. On the pedestrian plan, I believe there was a proposed pathway on the other side of the street. But I believe there was also discussion about fee and lieu for, for future redevelopment.
Okay, well, I mean, one of the things we have in middle housing, as I recall, is trying to make these areas more walkable. And one of the things that's disappointed me, I live in this, generally in this neighborhood, and come and go on Park Place all the time via bike and car. And it's horrible for walking. It's absolutely terrible. And people do walk to HEB that way regularly. So I know this would just be one tiny piece, but it would be nice if we could do, and through a redevelopment in here in the future, a better connectivity for walking.
Yes, sir.
So the, so the answer is no. They don't have to do a sidewalk if this redevelops?
Partly no, partly yes. So we actually are doing a study, and Jason might have stepped out, but we're doing a study right now through this corridor. We just finished it where we had a consultant go out there and figure out how we would add a sidewalk through this connection and what that would look like. And so they came up with three different options. We landed on an option, closed out that contract. So there is a sidewalk planned with the nature of that project. It'll need to be a standalone request because it's a very tight right-of-way through here. And so in order to get that in a piecemeal fashion, it just isn't very sufficient. So we're, we're working on bringing a project through the bike pedebore, as well as ultimate counsel, to get this whole connection finished. And that study finished just within the last four months. We had a consultant go out there and survey the entire corridor to get that figured out.
That's even better, Anthony.
I tried.
Yeah, because it, it's just, and people do walk this with bags of groceries, and there are cans in the street, and it's, it's bad news. I'm surprised nobody's been hit and killed. Thank you.
No other questions? This is a public hearing. I have no one who signed up to speak, but I will open the public hearing and see if there is anyone who wishes to speak on this item. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and turn to the will of the council.
Move to approve, second.
Motion made by Mr. Yancy, seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the chair will ask for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve item 8.2 indicate by saying aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That has been approved. That's 8.2. We move to 8.3. Again, public hearing, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding an ordinance amending, Appendix A, UDO, Article Four, Zoning District, Section 4.2, official zoning map of the Cota Ordinance City College Station, Texas, by changing the zoning district boundaries from our rural to PDD Plan Development District for approximately 3.6 acres at 3768 McCullough Road, generally located northeast, the intersection of Welborn Road and McCullough Road. And I do have a speaker signed up for this. Welcome, Mr. Howell.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jeff Howell with the Planning and Development Services Department. Tonight's request is for rezoning for a property that is currently vacant in a portion of the church property. And the future land use designation is currently neighborhood commercial. This commercial designation on the future land use is smaller in comparison to the general commercial, but it does cater to nearby residents. And this was approved earlier this year to change this designation to neighborhood commercial. The applicant's request is to change the zoning district from our rural to PDD Plan Development District. And this is identified by the applicant as to be an extension of the adjacent development. As with a request to Plan Development District, they did provide a base zoning district, which in this case would be Welborn Commercial. And they did also include a concept plan, which can be seen here. The concept plan does show a commercial development with single-story buildings, not larger than 10,000 square feet. As part of the concept plan, they did include several modifications. They did include modifications to the allowed uses, as well as additional prohibited uses. They did also request modifications to not require architectural standards, reduce the roof pitch, and change the location of parking locations adjacent to residential uses. As part of that, to offset those modifications, they did provide community benefits. With that, it would be to provide a landscape buffer of 30 feet on three sides with the double plantings, as well as to limit the building height to a single story and to not exceed 25 feet. And we did receive one phone call in support and three calls of inquiry. This item was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on October 16, where it was unanimously recommended for approval. And that concludes my presentation.
I have one question, a clarification. If you go back one to the modification request, it had been suggested to me that self-storage, which they're asking for as additional allowed, allowed use, is not somehow or another allowed within the Welborn commercial land use. I'm not quite sure, but have you been challenged on that before?
Right, so that question did come up. And so it is identified, when you look at the table of permitted uses, it is identified as a permitted use for those uses that were existing prior to 2011, which is when the properties would have been annexed as part of the Welborn plan. And so that's when this property was annexed into the city. And so similarly, the adjacent Plan Development Districts to the, to the left of this had that similar modification to allow for that use. And so this is a continuation of that, and so they are requesting the same thing.
So it's already been allowed in that previous P D D towards the highway?
That's correct, and that was approved in two thousand and twenty.
And so that indicates that it has been approved within our, twenty twenty as well after it was annexed, so I understand that.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. It may come up later, but I just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Schaefer?
Jeff, it's safe to assume, I guess, that when they want to get away from the non-residential architectural standards, I mean, there's not really a why here. Is it safe to assume it's about cost? You're making a cheaper building?
It was identified from the applicant. I can let the applicant speak to that a little bit more because they are here, but it was identified they are requesting that modification because it does not front onto Welborn Road.
Right. That's one reason. But, I mean, there's still a matter of character within the entire community, and this is still visible to people who'll be at the church. It's visible in some other ways. So it just, I mean, I don't know why you would, you know, you can say that, but there must be a reason for not wanting to do it. You reduce the pitch, you take it off, it makes a cheaper building presumably. I mean, that's okay. You don't have to answer that. But that's, to me, that's a concern when these kind of things want to come in and do, they do things that do affect the aesthetic of the community, even though they're not right up against the road. That's not always the first indicator, in my opinion. Thanks.
Would you just shift that back to the previous slide that you had up there? No, not the one that has the, there you go. Leave that there. Any other questions? Seeing none from the council at this point. This is a public hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Howell. Just stand by. I'll open the public hearing, and I'll call, I think it's Mr. Bob Cohen, who has signed up to speak. So I've opened a public hearing and asked for him to speak and anyone else who wishes to. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmen and ladies. My name is Robert Cohen, or Bob Cohen. I live at thirty-six fifty-five McCullough Road. You'll recognize that's real close to the address. And the picture that's on the screen right now, that yellow line, is about a hundred and ninety-nine feet long, and it's an estimate from the corner of our property to the corner of this property, and we were not notified that this was happening. But maybe we're two hundred and five feet. And so when you get, one of the arguments is when you get into rural area, two hundred feet doesn't quite cover the rule that the state requires. And by the way, that's not a maximum. That's a minimum. Thank you. That's number one. The pictures you received from Jane Cohen, this is one of them. There's a couple of them showing some flooding. And one of those is a picture of the, right up the driveway from Welborn Road to the church. And the road closest to, intersection closest to Welborn Road has got water flowing over it. And the reason that is, is all the land to the lift of that driveway is drained through that one covert down there at the end, which brings me to the next question. If the property owner owns the property against Welborn Road, why didn't they put the storage there? Well, of course, it floods.
Can you advance that?
There's a photo, there was a photo.
Okay, the B part, the B part that shows on here is the part I'm talking about. Everything to the north of the driveway entrance, which is the one that's got, section of it is two-way, and from there all the way up to Barron Cut Off Road, which is the next road north of that. And by the way, in this particular part of the country, Welborn Road is due north and south. A is our residence, and the property is just north of the church, as you see, that says Welborn Baptist Church. And if you'll advance it one more click. And there's the picture from Welborn Road to the church. And my major concern is light pollution. Florida's going to have to have light around it. And one of the things that, we like the dark sky. We got out last night to try to see the Aurora Borealis, and guess what? We could see Brian and College Station lights real well, looking north from our house. And at the planning and zoning, one of the members of the church testified, and he said, you know, there's sixty members of the church who prefer to do that. And I said, well, we live there. And he responded, we do too. I said, I know everybody that lives within five hundred feet of that church, and he ain't one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? The applicant here maybe wished to speak too? I should have invited you before if you wanted to speak, but you weren't on the list.
I'm sorry about that.
Introduce yourself and address, and we'll?
Good evening. My name is Tom Marty. I live at forty-three twenty-four Ledge Stone Trail. And I do live in that community. I live just about half a mile from that church. And I'm proud to say I've been a member of that church for fifteen years. And I'm going to tell you that Welborn Road does flood, and we do have a little bit of a flood problem at the end of our driveway. But it doesn't keep people coming to and from our church. We get in there all the time. So that three point six acres of property does belong to the church. The church membership, over a year ago, decided that we wanted to have this done. The contractor came to us and approached us to make this happen. He already owns the property that's in front of it, that abuts up against Welborn Road. This is just an extension of what he's already going to do. So I see no reason why the church shouldn't have the right to sell our property and allow this contractor to come in and do what he's already going to do. So with that, I've taken as much time as I can possibly take. I hope you have a pleasant evening. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your being here. Staff, oh, another person wants to speak? Please.
Glenn Jones, J four Engineering. I'm the applicant's agent for this application as well as the design engineer, and I wanted to answer Mr. Schaefer's question, and if there were any others, I could help answer those as well. As far as the architectural requirements for the buildings, they only apply to the first two hundred feet of the project in front of it. So by putting it into this new P D, it just extends what we're doing in the back half to this new section. That's the, really the only reason. Those buildings are all shielded by the ones in front, and the architectural elements just won't be visible.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions I could help?
Other questions for the engineer? No, I don't think so. Oh, I'll ask a question really for staff. As I understand it, Tex dot has plans to widen Welborn Road, so I would imagine that would change and improve the drainage substantially along there.
I had to work with Tex dot for the driveway in the front portion. They are widening, and they noted the drainage problem that you saw in the pictures. And there's quite a few improvements that's going to help address that. And ours is part of it with the detention system that we're putting in.
Thank you, sir. I see Ms. Cohen standing, so I cannot deny her the opportunity to add anything to what Mr. Cohen might have mentioned.
Mayor and council, thank you for hearing us. Jane Cohen, thirty-six fifty-five McCullough Road. I did send you my comments. I had a meeting earlier tonight, and I heard back from one of you that you received them, so thank you. I'd like to go to the third slide or the last slide that Bob had. And yes, I understand that drainage, the next one, is the next one, is a problem. That's Welborn Road. And yes, if Welborn Road is widened and has medians down it, then that should be taken care of, but it's a problem now. So let me go back to the comment about, could you show the slide that showed the proposed development, the city slide that showed the proposed development? On the top right, it says that it's proposed modification, which is self-storage. Self-storage is not in the Welborn Plan. It says modification requested. Now, that was in the materials we got. Maybe I don't understand them, but I've asked, and I still don't agree that self-storage is possible. The other point, well, self-storage may not be as bad as some other options that could happen there. Yeah, I realize that we do need some storage, but when they say it's protected by other areas, go to the slide that shows one of the maps. What's in front of it from Welborn Road? Nothing. Are they saying that the Welborn Baptist Church is going to protect vision of that? I just, I hope that the developer does a little bit better than what's been presented. The drainage, you see the little drainage ditch up there? But the drainage goes this way, and you're going to have concrete where all the buildings are going to be, so I'm not sure how drainage is going to really be handled. So Bob mentioned the lighting concern. I mentioned the trees were in my letter, email I sent you. Planning and zoning really works well with us on getting native trees. Our new director wants native trees. So I think, I think this is, has possibilities, and I'm not sure how much restrictions you can add, but it's not a well-thought-out plan now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cohen. Ask staff to come back. Any further questions for staff?
Couple of quick ones, Mayor.
Did anybody have another comment? Was there, the public hearing's still open. Is there any other comments? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And are there any other questions for staff? I'm sorry. Do you have a question here? I'm just looking the wrong way.
Thanks, Mayor. Jeff, we've had a lot of deliberation on this. I thought there was like significant buffering that was added around the building. Did I, okay?
So this slide identifies landscape buffer that is provided. This is an increase as it is identified as a community benefit from what the requirement would be. The requirement is a twenty-foot landscape buffer with a fence as part of the Welborn Commercial Zoning District, but the applicant is providing a thirty-foot buffer with a fence as well as the plantings.
Great deal. And just bottom line it for me, what the mayor was asking about, are we or are we not under a promise in the Welborn District that we wouldn't put any, allow any self-storage? Yes or no?
Well, the permitted uses in the use table does identify it as a permitted use, but it does have specific use standards that say that they are allowed prior to two thousand and eleven. So they are allowed, but then only prior to two thousand and eleven because that's when the property was annexed. So it is allowed, but not technically after two thousand and eleven. And so that's why, as part of the modification, they are asking for it similar to the property to the left.
It's added as a modification.
That's correct.
But they're allowed to add it as modification, as they already have done on the first part of the P D D, correct?
Correct. And technically, they could add additional uses as part of this, and these additional uses are identified as allowed uses on the adjacent Plan Development District as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have it before us. Public hearing's been closed. No further questions. Chair will entertain a motion regarding this item.
I make a motion to approve.
To approve? Is that what you said? Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Will it rise?
Motion made and seconded. You wish to speak to your motion? Do you speak second? Okay. So we have a motion to approve this proposed rezoning to a P D D. Any further questions, comments? Don't see any. All those in favor of the motion as stated signify by saying aye and raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, I think. I missed everybody down there, but it looked like everybody raised their hand. That's the problem with the dais, Mr. City Manager. I'm always complaining about it. I can't see everybody. Maybe you should do the counting for me. Now, we'll leave that go. Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for being here, for making your presentations to the Cohens. I think the P D D will answer a lot of the questions you have, and the drainage will be taken care of. Certainly the lighting, I know, is all, has to be focused down. All right. Let me see. Where am I? Up to eight point three? No, that was eight point three. Sorry.
Four.
This one is where eight point four and eight point five are tied together, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we have Mr. Harper here to present them. So I'm going to read both of the eight point three and eight point, eight point four and eight point five. But we'll have separate votes, but we'll have one presentation, one public hearing, and separate votes. And no one has signed up to speak. Okay, eight point four, public hearing, presentation, discussion, possible action, approving ordinance vacating and abandoning a zero, zero point zero eight-two acre portion of thirty-foot wide landscape access and public utility easement located along block two, lot two, block four of the Business Center College Station subdivision, Phase Two Brazos County, Texas, according to the plat recorded in volume three four nine zero, page two sixty-seven of the official public records of Brazos County. That's eight point four. Eight point five is very similar, except that it is a approving ordinance vacating and abandoning a zero point two five two acre portion of a thirty-foot wide landscape utility easement located along lot one R, block four of the Business Center College Station subdivision, Phase Three Brazos County, Texas, according to the plats recorded, volume thirty-seven sixty-four, page one thirty, and volume eleven thousand six hundred and forty, page ninety-nine of the official public records of Brazos County, Texas. Mr. Lucas Harper will lead us through this request, probably using less words than I've already read.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Lucas Harper, Planning and Development Services. Tonight's agenda item, items eight point four and eight point five are the requested abandonments of portions of landscape access and utility easements located in the Business Center Phases Two and Three. The easements are located adjacent to and surrounding the Technology Way right-of-way that was heard and conditionally abandoned by council at the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five City Council meeting. And they're approximately five hundred and fifty feet northeast of the intersections of Technology Way and Lake Way Drive. The plotted easements are generally thirty feet wide, and the portions to be abandoned do not house utilities. Portions of the easements reserved for access and maintenance of the existing utilities located in the conditionally abandoned right-of-way have been excluded from this abandonment request. The request for abandonment was initiated by the applicant due to their desire to construct a portion of their structure and supporting drive aisles and parking in the area of the easements. All utilities have provided consent for the abandonments, and city staff does recommend approval. I have had no inquiries about this. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak? There was no one signed up for it. So I will close the public hearing and go to the will of the council on eight point four. We got to vote separately, correct?
Move approval.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, second?
Bob.
Second by Mr. Smith.
Whomever.
I got Mr. Smith down here. So we got motion and second to approve eight point four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Anyone wish to make a motion on item eight point five?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Mr. Wright, the seconding, and Ms. McLean, you made the motion.
Mayor, can I just ask a question before we vote? May I ask a question before we vote?
Oh, yes, sir.
Thanks. Why doesn't everybody do this? Why, I mean, we're looking at, why wouldn't everybody just come in and ask for this land back?
No, well, it's an economic development discussion. I was involved in that discussion with a company that is there. They own the property across the way. We have already abandoned the street.
Right. I heard that, but it just strikes me that, you know, there's a lot of right-of-way that we obviously put aside for a reason, and if I was doing it, I'd ask for it every time.
We put aside for the sale of the property next door to?
Okay, we don't have to talk about it now.
And they've already bought that property. They want to expand. Okay, that, I'm trying to answer the question. That's why, a lot of people don't come and ask for it because they don't own the property there, and it's going to affect other people. They couldn't couldn't if they didn't own the property. Okay. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, any further questions? I don't want to rush anybody. Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. We have?
Thank you.
Approved both of those abandonments. Item eight point six, public hearing, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding an ordinance amending Chapter one oh three Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Three Technical Codes, Division Two Building Codes and Division Three Electrical Codes adopted in adopting, adopting the two thousand and twenty-four International Codes, the two thousand and twenty-three National Electrical Code, N E C, and related amendments. Mr. Ben? Mr. Benford, welcome.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, Brian Benford, building official. Let me adjust this, I'm sorry. So the, the codes, both the ICC codes and the National Electrical Code are updated every three years for various reasons. A lot of it's to keep up with federal standards, but you know, there's new safety features that come in, things of that nature. Excuse me. We, as a city, are currently under the 2021 International Codes and the 2020 National Electric, Electrical Code. And this new proposal, there is actually less total amendments, and that's a lot of that to do with state law that changed, and you can't regulate, like we've talked about, building materials. Well, that carries over into construction materials as well. And so there's seven new amendments, but the total number of amendments has actually gone down. This is just a highlight overview of some of the changes. Decreased attic insulation for 1 and 2 family dwellings. I won't read every one of them to you. I know y'all have had this. But this covers kind of the whole family of codes and some of the changes that are in there.
Glass fiber works in concrete.
It, oh, go back, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Stuff works.
Yeah, it was, we had a pretty cool meeting on that with a company.
So Brian, why would, the only question I had when I looked over this is decreased attic insulation. That didn't make sense to me. I mean, this all seems fine, but I just wondered why that was.
Great question. I actually have been in training the last three days, and that was one of the questions I was trying to get addressed. And so in the 20, in the 2018 codes, residential home was R38. And then in the 2021 codes, it went to R49. And essentially, coming from, and you have to look at everything and where the information comes from, what associations putting out the information and where they are in that aspect. But it was, you spend the money to get to this point, and then the money from that point to that point doesn't justify, it takes a lot longer to get that money back, I guess is the best way to say it. So you spend it all getting to that R38, and then that additional increase just isn't getting the return that you would think the homeowner would get from it, is how it was explained to me.
So it's back to 38 now?
Yes.
Or some other number?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it was 38, 49, back to 38. Yes, sir. I absolutely hate it when they do that with full swing changes, but it does happen from time to time.
Any other questions on this page?
Oh, I'm sorry. And so we did provide an overview of all the changes to the leadership group with the Greater Brazos Valley Builders Association back in July and August. Got those to them in two, two batches. Had a couple of questions back and forth, but they even supported some of the new amendments we had in there. And then this was presented to the Construction Board of Adjustments on October 28, and it was a unanimous recommendation for adoption as approved, or as presented.
Those changes you had on the previous page, those are changes in the code. They're not amendments by that we're making.
It's just, that was just a.
You're just summarizing. Okay.
Yes, sir. And, and so staff also recommends approval. We do request a, an effective date of January 1 to give projects that are currently under design time to work through that before we, you know, we're not just changing it 10 days on them. And then I'm, I'm here for any questions, obviously.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Benford?
I just wanted to say one thing.
Oh, yeah. You're in the business, please.
Mr. Benford is not here that often, but we have had the recent experience of working in a different municipality, and I very much appreciate that your inspectors are incredibly responsive, usually out the very next day. That has not been my experience elsewhere. So I just doubly appreciate, I think we take that for, for granted, but you guys are awesome.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions or staff, this is a public hearing. Item 8.6, I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, so, but I'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak on, on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and turn to the will of the council.
Move approval.
Second, third.
Everyone and everyone.
Mr. White made the motion. Who seconded? Anybody? Bob?
You gotta be quick, buddy.
Carl, Scott, I'm sorry. Scott Shafer second. I have to do this so we keep the record straight for the city secretary's minutes. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benford. Appreciate your being here. The next item is related, well, not directly, but similarly. It's also code-related. If I can turn the page. Item 8.7, presentation, discussion, possible action regarding ordinance amending Chapter 16 Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 3 Fire Code, Section 1651, 1652, and Article 4 Life Safety Code, Section 1680. Mr. Giadano.
Good evening. Cameron Giadano, Fire Marshal. This is going to be a very similar presentation to Mr. Benford's, here proposing the 2024 International Fire Code and 2024 Life Safety Code. They're updated every three years as well. Our task, our goal going into the code cycle, this cycle, was to look at our amendments and finding duplication, and do we still have a necessity for amendments? Like the building code, we also have fewer amendments than previous. We removed a lot of duplication that were found in other codes that we didn't really need anymore. We're on the 2121 International Fire Code and Life Safety Code. We have eight new proposed local amendments, and we're proposing to remove nine. Like I said, mainly due to duplication. Some of the highlights of the fire code changes are carbon monoxide detection is now going to be required in every occupancy that has gas, fuel, burning appliances. Those are previously just found in education or residential. The big changes for the IFC this year were they added entire sections over lithium batteries. That's kind of the new, new thing in fire safety, and that's kind of our new thing that starts fires now.
Where is typical, where would you find that? Storage room would be a commercial property that's selling these things?
In stores like Home Depot and Lowe's, they take recycled batteries. So really, anything over 15 cubic square feet is going to increase the fire safety requirements. And that's only 2 55-gallon barrels worth of batteries.
Right, thank you.
So. There's some new alternative fire extinguishing systems that are now in the code. These are good for IT rooms that don't really want water on them. These were also presented to the Construction Board of Adjustments on October 28, and they voted unanimously to recommend adoption as presented, as do we, with a request of effective date of January 1.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, interestingly enough. But any questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Motion made by Mr. White, second by Ms. McLean. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Just one comment.
Please, you're in the business, yeah.
No, the Fire Marshal shows up faster than Benford Inspector, so good job to y'all too. They usually come same day.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second. All those in favor to approve, all those in favor, same by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's 8.7. 8.8 and 8.9, I guess they're separate. Mr. Ostrowski is coming forward. I got it, they're both baseball-related in different ways, so I'll let them be separate, I guess, unless you need it together in one.
No, they can be separate. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Let me just read the heading. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding the Veterans Park and Midtown Area Baseball Field Projects. Mr. Ostrowski.
Michael Ostrowski, Chief Development Officer. So this item is to get some direction from council, next steps as it relates to baseball, really looking at two different components. One, the championship field, as well as the remaining complex with the, the eight other fields. You've seen a proposal by, by Southern Roots, so staff is really looking for direction right now on how to proceed on both of those. One option with, with the championship field is, and probably the quickest option for it to be built, would be the city construct the championship field likely in the corner of Midtown Drive and corporate Parkway Extension. And then look at, one of the options we could look at there too is, is that design fit specifically for, for that location. We may look at some modifications for the design to add some additional capacity. If there was an opportunity for, let's say, a minor league team in the future, we could look at some potential design changes to have the ability to expand it in the future if that were the case. But then the second portion with the complex, we've been presented opportunity from a private entity through Southern Roots. And so the question with that is, does council want to negotiate directly with that group? Or would you like to go out for a request for proposals to see if there are any other potential respondents that would be out there?
That's a summary of your presentation, so you're looking for direction.
We are.
All right. Who would like to provide some direction? Mr. Yancy?
As one member of council, I'd like to see us treat this as a sole source economic development project without going to bid, with the exception of the championship field, which I, as one member of council, would like to see the City of College Station take that on as an expedited and concurrent project under the auspices of City Hall and our staff.
Any other comments in support of that or a different direction? Mr. Smith?
My comments would be, would be in support of that as well. I think that in order to expedite the, the development going ahead with Southern Roots and moving on with that, and then also doing a concurrent city capital project on the championship field.
Other comments?
Just a quick question for Michael. Are you asking for us to evaluate the seating capacity now or just allow for the expansion in the future?
We could look at and work with the architects to see what it would take to expand the currently designed facility to potentially add those in the future.
I'd, I'd to support the economic development agreement over the RFP process and also support the immediate rollout of anything we can do to get that championship field moving.
Any other comments? Looks like I'm shaking my head. And Mr. White?
I'm in full agreement with, with one of my colleagues this year. Can you kind of give us a timeline if we move forward with this championship field? Would it be ready for 2027, June 2027?
June 2027, likely not. I think at the earliest, you know, if everything went correctly and we don't hit weather delays and so forth, you're probably looking later 2027, but more likely 2028 for the opening of the season there. And we will do everything we can to expedite it, to, to see how quickly we can get it for 2027, but likely not June, but it could be later 2027. Thank you.
Okay, no further comments. Before we finalize our direction, I do have a speaker, Mr. Uri Giva. Uri Giva has signed up to speak, even though it's not a public hearing, but it's an item on our agenda, and anyone's wished, anyone's welcome to speak.
Hi, good evening. Uri Giva from College Station. And I had my friend Kaboom, but it was well past his bedtime. Also, longtime resident of College Station. There's been some talks about what minor league baseball really means. Most would agree it's fireworks, drone shows, bobbleheads, custom jerseys, dizzy bat races, kids running the bases every night, supporting local charities, great mascots like Kaboom. I wish he would hear that because I never compliment him. Baseball camps, fun food, and developing future talent. I think the future talent is a key, with Corey Kluber, a Cy Young winner, Hunter Pence, an MLB All-Star and a World Series champion, Paul Goldschmidt, a National League MVP, AJ Minter, Bryce Miller, and others who've made a mark in the majors. They all came from the Texas Collegial League. Some of them have been Bombers as well. And they make more impact in the major leagues than any independent professional league has ever made in Texas. Even coaches like Tyler Gillum, who now leads the Savannah Bananas, once wore a Bombers jersey. We're thankful for the City of College Station's vision to secure the Bombers' long-term home, your hometown minor league baseball team. I respectfully urge the council mayor to act tonight. Move forward with the championship stadium at Midtown, relocate the current Veterans design to Midtown Drive, and keep the momentum strong. This decision will not negatively affect the amazing project the city is working with to finalize with Thomas Rogers and his group. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you. Ms. Giva, you have a question for him?
Yes, sir. We, we made a commitment to you and the Bombers that we would, we would have a championship field, and we said we would do that in 2027. It looks like now probably you're looking at 2028 as the, as the opening day for College Station. Is that doable for you? I mean, are you able to find various alternative locations for the next three years?
I think in working with the city staff and, and the esteemed colleagues up here that there's a wonderful facility at Texas A&amp;M at Olson Field, and there's a great economic relationship between the city and the university, and that could be an option to play some games there in 2027. There's other economic ways to make sure that the Bombers are going to be here by 2028. So we'll work with city staff, we'll support the project as is, and hopefully it can move super fast. And there have been miracles before, and if you build it, they will come. And I think they can build it really fast. And I've seen the staff work miracles before. And maybe 27 could happen. Maybe it's not June, but maybe it's July, or maybe it's, you know, the last week of the season. Maybe play playoffs there in 2027. So I think, you know, I, I fully believe that the staff can work really fast and do some magical things.
Let me ask the question in a completely different way. You're not planning on going to any other cities. You're stuck with College Station. You're here, this is your home. We want Bombers in College Station, correct?
I've lived in College Station for over 30 years. I'm not moving anywhere. And the Bombers will be in their home away from home in Navasota, and they're happy to have us temporarily. And it is closer than our old home up north.
Thank you, Uri. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate your presentation and your statement. Let me just turn back to Michael. Did, I think I saw a pretty strong consensus reflecting what Mr. Yancy direction was. Is that enough direction, or do you need more specifics?
No, I think that's it. So we'll take, city will proceed looking at constructing the championship field. We'll directly negotiate with Thomas Rogers and his team for the remaining complex. And we'll also start the work on design for the utilities and infrastructure for the site.
Okay, it sounds like that's an agreement in everybody up here, so that's good. That's your direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 8.9 is presentation, discussion, possible action on two deductive change orders related to Veterans Park Baseball Field Project, a deduction of $266,586.55 on the design contract with Pendulum Studio LLC for design work, and a deduction of $5,000 on the CMAR contract with Crane Group LLC for pre-construction services. Ms. Kane.
Good evening. These are the two change orders related to the VPAC project. And so these are just a formality that we brought to y'all for your discussion tonight, to close out the design contract with Pendulum, and then to close out the design, or the construction management risk contract with the Crane Group for the Veterans Park project. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kane?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Yancy.
May I ask her questions, Mayor? Tangential to or indirectly related to 8.8?
Well, do they bear to 8.8?
Yes, sir.
Well, I will allow that, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure how that would go, but.
Ms. Kane, we.
Please keep, keep it succinct.
I will. We, we just, I think, gave direction clearly that we would be building the championship field at, did you understand it that way?
Yes.
And is that something as our Capitol Project Professional that you feel like we can do and do efficiently?
Yes, we can.
And can you also help us with an assurance that the taxpayer can be backstopped, to use a, a, probably improper analogy? In the unlikely event, I, as one member of council, don't think it's going to happen, but our partner, that they're unable to successfully complete the larger section of fields, would the city be able to backstop that, step in, and ensure that the taxpayer's investment is protected by completing?
I think that's not a question for Capitol Projects. It's probably a question for either Mr. Ostrowski or the city manager, because I think it is germane to that issue, if that's what you're really.
Yes, sir.
You didn't put it in your, you want to add that to the direction?
Yes, sir. So I would say, I mean, looking at all the items we talked about, it probably falls somewhere in the gray area of these. I think Kane would tell you that we are more than capable of building baseball fields. I mean, consider the fact that we were going to build other baseball fields. We are building the championship field, which would be the most complex one. So we certainly have the capability. Specifically, as it relates to what would happen in the deal, that's something that obviously would be based on what council's direction and the resources that we put to it, but all of it's within our capabilities.
it, but all of it's within our capabilities as a city. Were it not to be formed, performed by a private sector entity in this situation, or if just council had decided, we want you to go build them?
So we will plan from a worst-case scenario to be prepared to make the taxpayer whole on the completion of the baseball field.
Planning for a worst-case scenario is our total MO.
Just what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. It looks like you raised another question, Mr. White wants to ask.
Yes, based off, I think, the direction that council has given tonight, moving forward with the championship field, knowing that we're going to try to use the design from Veterans. Can you tell me, based off your experience, what other steps that will occur over the next two and a half years until we open that facility that will come back to council for approval?
Sure, so since, you know, if we are going to reuse the design from Veterans Park, the majority of it, as we had mentioned before, a lot of it can be reused. But some of the initial steps we'll have to do is certainly get a new proposal, do a new contract with the design team, we will go through another process to get the construction manager back on board to help us with this project. Again, all after the funding is allocated for it, we'll have to do survey work, geotechnical work, and then re, you know, restart all of the rest of the design, finish things out and get all the new components there, and then we would work with our contractor, they would bid it out, and then they would start construction.
And so, so in that process, what point do you come back for council for approval, whether it's approval for funds for the contractor, the design? How many more steps do we have as a council to make this field a whole?
Sure, so for sure, on December, I think it's the 9th, for the Capitol Budget Meeting, we'll talk about this again with some numbers associated with it, similar to what we've already been talking about. I think it's the second meeting in January, we'll have a budget amendment, which would include the additional funds most likely to discuss. Then we would bring back, at some point in there, we'd bring back the design contract for council for approval, and then any guaranteed maximum price amendments for construction would come back. Likely there'd be more than one, we'd have probably a site package, and then the actual construction package, so at least, at least four or five more times to talk about, if not, if not more. We could certainly provide updates during the, I think every six months or so we do capital updates, it would be part of that process as well.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Okay, on 8.9, we're talking about the deductive changes. Any further comments? No one signed up to speak on this, they're laid out here, the reasons for that I think are pretty clear. Any further questions?
I would move approval.
Motion made by Ms. McElhany to approve, second?
Second.
By Mr. Yancey, second by Mr. Yancey. All of those, any further discussion? Guess not, apparently not. All those in favor of the approval of the deductive change orders as outlined in 8.9, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Ms. Kane. Okay, Ms. Smith. We have 8.8, 8.10. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding resolution nominating candidates for the Brazos Appraisal District Board of Directors. We had a letter, oh, there you are, I'm sorry. You're right where you need to be, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, we received a letter, this is a resolution nominating a candidate to the Appraisal District Board of Directors. Susan Pesel was nominated by City Council, and her term expires December 31st of this year. She is willing to re-reserve, and so we just need a motion for that resolution.
Okay, Chair will, any questions? She is only, she drew a one-year term, so she just barely got the one year, so she wants to continue, she's talked to me and she's applied for it, so Chair will entertain a motion to approve that.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McElhany, seconded by Mr. Yancey to approve the nomination of Ms. Pesel.
Ms. Pesel, yes, Susan Pesel.
To the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I will note that she's nominated, but that doesn't mean she's elected.
No, it'll come back in December.
Now, does this whole council have to vote? The number, we got a certain number of votes based on our tax roll.
Yes.
You want the whole council to vote on that?
It will come back in December.
Okay.
At that time where you'll, you'll make that vote.
All right, we'll talk about it then. Thank you. And you're still there, of course, because we have another item. 8.11. Presentation, discussion, possible action regarding appointment, the appointments of the Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir, this, we have received applicants for each position. We actually didn't receive any more than what is on the screen here and before you on the tally sheet. We do have two P&amp;Z members that you will have to choose between or vote on, so we just need a motion for, for these individuals.
Remind me why we have ad, why are there isn't an ad hoc? That usually means by virtue of their position, they're on the committee, but these are...
I think that was the definition that was provided in the state legislative terminology. I think that's what's guided all of this.
The ad hoc members are just basically, they're unaffiliated with some sort of entity. So in this case, we have two members of P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning Commission, two members, you've got four members that have to be from the real estate development or builder community, and then the, we called them ad hoc members in the previous IFAC, we had two ad hoc members or kind of at-large members, just a terminology thing, same difference really.
But I think the terminology's wrong.
We don't need, we don't need the tally sheets this time, we can just make a motion.
We, there's a, the P&amp;Z members are, there's two people who are willing to serve. Everyone else, we only got enough applicants to fill the positions, so you could either appoint now, you could wait to get more applicants.
To be clear, if you just make a motion that includes everyone and pick one of those P&amp;Z members, that's it.
That's what I was...
That's the point, you got to pick one of those members, and not all of us might agree on that, so that's, that's a problem. Do you want, do you want tally sheets or do you want?
If y'all just want to make a motion and y'all know who y'all want to select.
Mayor, I'll make a motion if you're ready.
All right, please do.
I move that we accept the recommendation from staff and in the awaiting confirmation slot, P&amp;Z member, that Mark Chalupka be selected.
I'll second.
Okay, we're second for Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? No, okay, no further discussion, I guess we can proceed with that. You heard the motion of the choice on the P&amp;Z member, is Mark Chalupka and all the rest as indicated by staff.
Okay, yeah, I just want to clarify that you are, you picked Mark and all the others.
Yes, I did.
Yeah, he, all of those that were presented by staff, but of the two, Mark Chalupka, and we got a motion and second. So all those in favor, same by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, so do you have the information you need?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Ooh, my goodness, that's the end of the regular agenda. Item nine, items of community interest and council calendar. You have the council calendar attached to the back of something or another. Oh, I think it's the back of this list here. And in front of you. I will advertise November 17th, Mr. Yancey's Intergovernmental Committee Meeting, the guest speaker will be Mr. Ostrowski talking about College Station development plans and strategies, right?
Yes, sir.
All of that, okay. Any other comments on the items? Notice that we meet on Monday, the 24th, if you don't already have that on your agenda, please make sure it's on there. I believe that's a four o'clock meeting, unless we decide in executive session that we need an earlier start. Pardon?
I was kidding.
Okay. I guess the only other item that I want to bring up here is to note the passing of one of our esteemed former mayors, Gary Halter. I think everybody is already aware of that. Tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 in 1207 Texas Avenue, our event space over here will be a celebration of his life. I hope that all of you will consider what Gary has done for the city, and if you're available, you might want to attend that, that celebration. I know the family would very much appreciate it, and I think we have in different ways already expressed condolences to the family, but I'll add mine. Daughter and son both are, along with their families, are certainly thinking about Gary and all that he has meant to them, and certainly we remember what he's meant to the city. So thank you all, and I'll move on to, anybody else got anything for community input? Item 10, the council reports on committees, boards, and commissions. Okay, no updates there?
I would say, I've simply attended a successful board meeting for the Arts Center of Brazos Valley, and we had a successful Bike Ped and Greenways Advisory Board meeting since we last met.
And I guess I would add that internal committees, let's see, yesterday we had the Compensation Benefits Committee meeting, and staff presented the opportunity, and we had a great discussion, looks like staff recommendation on which way to proceed was accepted by the subcommittee. The full council will be informed by the city manager what that issue was, nothing to, to lose any sleep over, but had to be made before the end of the year. Future agenda items, a review of standing list of council-generated future agenda items. Mr. Wright?
So one of the things that we learned from TML that a different city does is they have a state of the city address, and I'd like to explore an option of doing that. I don't know if this needs to come back as a workshop or whatever, but I think sometime after strategic planning, maybe in, maybe in March, to have a sort of open house where perhaps departments can be here for citizens to ask questions, and then after an hour or so of open house, we can have a state of the city address where we as council or the mayor can lay out sort of what we learned in strategic planning and put it out for the citizens to hear as a means of transportation and transparency, sorry, it's late, and as a way to kind of lay the groundwork for what we intend to do through the rest of the year. So I don't know how that can come back, if everyone's in agreeance that's something we can explore.
You're really speaking of an event beyond the published year in review or whatever it is that CMO puts together. There is already a publication that would be part of that, I assume, but you want to go beyond that?
Absolutely.
What does council think about that? Do you want a future agenda item?
I don't know, can we, we could probably outline it as strategic planning or something. I mean, I don't, do we need a whole agenda item for?
I'm not sure, I just didn't know a better avenue to bring it up.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly discuss, I mean, as strategic planning, we can come with staff and say, here's kind of some options, and if you tell us, bring it back that way, we can, or we can have a workshop about it, whatever y'all want to do.
Yes.
Shall we just direct staff to come up with a plan on how to do that? But you're talking about an event beyond that, and you communicate some of your ideas to them about what you think that event looks like. Is that good enough direction, and you can come back to us with some options and, great, thank you.
I have one.
Yes, you have another?
Yes, you know, with tonight, the event of tonight with us looking at the Wyndham Track, I became aware that there is a allowance, or it's permitted by state law that we can require a super majority vote of council to overturn a unanimous vote by P&amp;Z. So if they unit, like if they make a recommendation to deny something that is unanimous, it would then take a super majority vote of council to overturn. I think our P&amp;Z works really hard and does a lot of good work.
Are you suggesting that that is already state law?
State law permits municipalities to adopt that as a ordinance.
Yeah. We'd have to look, we'd have to look specifically, but I know we have not adopted it. I do believe it is an option.
Correct, I'm saying that I would, I personally would like to see that come back as an ordinance for us to review and hopefully approve.
Anybody else interested in that?
I generally like that idea, unless except because of what you brought up during that discussion, which is, we saw it, we pointed out a couple of times earlier, things change a lot between, sometimes between P&amp;Z and us, and...
You're not voting on the same thing.
And I don't think that that's fair either, and it's part of it. So, I mean, there's nothing like investing a lot of good time, energy, and effort and feeling like the test canary in the mine, just to see what changes need to be made before it moves forward, and...
Yeah, we probably should wait to debate this when it comes back.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you, if you would like to debate this, then we put an item on, it doesn't indicate whether council is in support or against it, but we could certainly bring back information and you all could discuss it.
I would, I would second adding it to a future meeting.
I see, I see two people that want to have that discussion.
Yeah, I'm fine to add it in, I just want to talk about it.
I see three people that want to have that discussion. Okay, that, we got, we got, we got a majority of the council members that want to have that discussion, so add that to the future agenda item. I hesitate to ask for any more because I don't really want any more, but... All right, we still got an executive session to return to. Are there any further comments before we recess the regular meeting and go back to executive session? Seeing none, we are in recess until we return from executive session.